Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting, November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This is the seven o'clock meeting. I will call that meeting to order. The real call is Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
House Member Abraham?
Here.
Mayor President Baker?
Here.
House Member Hamilton?
Here.
House Member Henderson?
Here.
House Member Hodrick?
Here.
House Member Pennington?
Here.
All present. We have two discussion items this evening. C one is the city manager finalist candidate interviews. We have three interviews this evening. The order will be Chris Wilson will go first for the first hour. Rex Sukanen will go second for the second hour. And Victor Gardinas will go for the third hour. C two will be the city council deliberations that will come after the interviews. So I see Chris Wilson is here and ready to go. Good evening.
I'm here.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
This, Chris, will be pretty much the same as last time. Each council member will ask you a question, will go around the table, and will go around the table again, and then we'll see how much time is left if we continue past that. As before, each council member will ask the exact same question to each candidate so that there's fairness for everyone.
Great.
If you're ready to go, I will ask the first question.
I have one comment. There's, I think there's a couple of different questions. There's a few custom questions for each candidate. Most, almost all of them.
It's already incorporated and the mayor is asking.
Okay.
It's in your sheets.
Right. Yeah, they're not, they're not all being asked the exact same question. Mostly they are, but there's a few tailored to each.
There are some that are tailored to each candidate, but it's the same theme of question to each candidate.
Correct.
Fair enough? Chris, "How would you describe your management and leadership style? Please identify strengths and weaknesses related to both your management and your leadership approach, and identify how you hold direct reports accountable for projects and/or issues that you've delegated to them."
I may, I may ask you to repeat them. I think I got, I think I got all of them. I'd say it's, I have a very highly collaborative style, management and leadership style. I work directly in conjunction, even though I am the manager and the boss. I try to bring everybody in, in a communicate, you know, in a way to communicate in a symbiotic relationship to work together. I'm, I want to say I'm necessarily hands off, but I definitely try not to micromanage. I operate under the assumption that they're professionals, that they know more about the technicalities of their, of their job than I do. It's my job to lead them as a leader of the organization, but they all have very technical aspects of the jobs, the qualification of their jobs that I, that I, that I don't have. So I have to rely on their technical expertise. I, I, again, I think there are some, there are some, some of the strengths of that, if, when you have a good quality and capable staff, they have, they have authority, and I think they have the discretion to handle matters on their own. I think that's, I think that's good. I think they need that, they need that flexibility, they need that discretion at times to do that, and I will give them a lot of leeway and a lot of discretion to use, to use that judgment. I have to hold them accountable because, well, I'm going to be accountable when the mistakes happen, and that's, 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 to me, that's the flip side of that. When something happens, I can't say, "Well, I delegated Joe to do that and he messed it up." No, it's, I'm, the buckstubs, me, I'm the guy in charge. I'll sit up and take accountability for whatever was that happened, and I'll work with Joe to fix it. And then, you know, you may have to have that accountability behind closed doors. But I, if you're, you can't, you can't give them the flexibility and the discretion, but also be willing, be willing to stand behind them in what they do. I think that's, I think that's critical. Again, there may, there will be mistakes made by me as well, and, but I'm responsible, I'm responsible that everything goes on, including the things that don't, that don't go real well, and I can't, I can't, you know, I just think you can rightfully say, when something goes bad, not to be there and say, "Well, that's your problem, you fix it." I've got to be there with them to help and to guide, as, as much as, as my knowledge or area of expertise allows. If nothing else, to be the, be the point man and the front man and the one people are yelling at, so they're not yelling at the people who are actually fixing it, they're yelling at me. That's, sometimes that's, that's the deflector shield part of the job. Did I miss an aspect of the question?
No, I think we did. I think we got it. Thank you. Very well. Next, Mayor Potem Baker will ask the next question.
Hi, Chris. Currently, the Troy Public Library operates on a dedicated millage. The current funding was designed to keep the library open six days a week, but there is a demand for the library to be open seven days a week. Some believe that the library should be funded by the general fund. How will you address this concern when the millage expires in 2020, and how will you propose to fund a seven-day library? How would factors like the rising minimum wage and operating costs affect your plan?
That is, that is a very good question, and I, and I like, I like the dedicated millage aspect of things. We've done that a bit in the Village of Beverly Hills as well. I know there's some critique of that, that it becomes, you know, government, government à la carte, but I, I think, I think it gives some reassurances to, to, to the, to the general public as well, when you're going out and asking for revenue. This is what this is dedicated for. By state statute, it has to go toward that purpose. It can't be used for anything else, and I think it gives them a little, a level of assurance that even though if we say, "Well, this is going into the general fund," and it's going for, you know, a lot of different things, and certain, certain portions goes to the library, they seem, I've always felt that the public seems to have a bit more confidence knowing that that's dedicated directly to the library, or that's dedicated directly to public safety, that's dedicated to roads. Not just because, I mean, I don't advocate because it's politically easier, but it seems to be, in my conversations I've had with a lot of people, they like, they like those dedicated funds, they like those, those dedicated millages, and they, they seem, and if, historically, I mean, if you read the election results, they, they do well. Road millages have done well, they're going to continue to do well for obvious reasons in, in this state. And I think then it becomes, you know, when the millage, when the, when the millage comes up, then you've just got to be open and honest with people about, about the budget. Here's, here's what our budget constraints are, here's all of our operations, here's how they've worked for the last five years, while we're projecting going forward, and this is what the, this is what the, this is what the millage will allow us to do. We can only operate, continue to operate the way we are. If there's shortages there, you know, you're looking to operate 24/7, and it maybe, maybe the, the budget doesn't work that far, I think you could, you know, collaborate in-house with the, with the library staff, and, you know, in conjunction with the approval of council, say, "Well, what, if we can't operate the entire thing 24/7, are there certain things that are more important than others to be operated 24/7? Are there certain aspects we can operate on, operate on a limited basis, making sure that, again, that the, the, the numbers work? Are there certain functions that are more important than others that they want to have there? Is it, is it, is it the reference side? Is it the computer literacy side? Is it the, is it the children's side?" So if we, if we had to limit, I would, I would say we try to start looking through the, looking through our own operations to figure out, well, if we, if we're short of being able to operate everything 24/7, what can we earmark specific funds to? And does that, does that line up with what we think the public is looking to do? But I, you know, again, and I think it's, I think it's kind of critical for the, for the administration to be on the same plane with the council and just telling people, you know, I, I always love to tell people, "This is great, you have all the government, you have all the government that you're willing to pay for," and just, but, but, but be frank with them and hope you develop that trust with the public, they understand. And not everybody will, and always be, there'll always be some people who want to argue about the budget figures, and, and we can, we can do that as well, but I hope you have the, the trust from administration and council to say, "Here's what, here's what we can do with, with the allocation. If you want, if you want more, we can ask for more. If you want less, we can, we can scale that back to however the public deems appropriate."
Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham will ask the next question.
There are times when a governing body is divided. Please describe how you've dealt with this type of situation in the past. How were you able to keep operations running effectively and efficiently?
There are times, you mean like, like, like all the times, right? Is there an alternative? I haven't been aware of that in sixteen years. No, there's always, there are always going to be differences of opinion. I think well-intentioned, well-informed, and reasonable people can disagree and can do so professionally, and not, and not, look, the issues are important, you know, you guys deal with important issues. You deal with issues regarding public safety, public health and welfare, all right? There's a lot of money at stake in some of these decisions, so things are going to get heated. That's, that's, that's okay. If, if it was, if, you know, we start throwing around numbers like that, and nobody's, you know, nobody's thinking that hard about it, and nobody has differences of opinion, then that, that's maybe symptomatic of another problem. So there's always going to be divisions. I've always tried to, I've always tried to be fair and equitable with, with all council members, tried to make sure that I, I explain things that I think in a way that were, that were accurate, that I always stand behind everything that I, that I said. And I think one of the greatest things that, that you can say is, "Man, I made a mistake, and here's what I did, and here's, and here's, here's, here's why I was wrong, and here's what I should have done, and this is how we're going to fix it going forward." So I, I think if you can, if you can develop those relationships, even, even if they're not, you know, maybe ideological, ideological, or you just have differences of opinions on how things should operate, hopefully be able to build a, a level of trust and rapport that, you know, "We're going to have this debate, and I'm going to disagree with you," and the debate may even get heated because I believe passionately at my side, but I'll walk out the door, we'll shake hands, and we'll go to the car and talk to each other about our kids, and get in the car and go home. And I, I hope, you hope that's, that's the way. I've been in all the situations that wasn't the case, and they, they really, and when it becomes, when it becomes personal, and when that trust is completely gone in the system, then the system only breaks down. I think we talked about that a little bit in the last time. I mean, I mean, trust is the lubrication that makes this whole machine operate. If the trust isn't there, if the administrations have, if the councils have trust in the administration or trust within each other, if I don't trust, have trust within the department heads, then there's just certain things that have to be kind of accepted, you know, not, not faith, not on the religious side, but when I tell you, you know, "That stretch of road is going to cost, you know, 1.5 million to be paid," and when I get that number from, well, I got it from my engineers or my experts. You know, we could argue for hours about that, right? Just that one issue, right? There's a million things on the agenda. We're going to argue about the cost of that one mile and a half of road. Well, there has to be some level of trust in that, that, that number was based on good solid evidence, and I'm not, I'm not fudging it somewhere, there's no money going anywhere else, I'm not going to take it and build a sidewalk on the other side of town too with it. That just, that has to be there. When I see when that breaks down, that's, disagreements, I think disagreements are the problem. I, I think disagreements are healthy, this is, this is representative democracy, everybody represents different interests, and I think it's good and healthy to have those, those discussions. And I've been a part of heated, and, man, I've said things, "Ooh, I, you know, I couldn't grab it when I came out." I wanted to. But that's, that's, that's okay, and you should be passionate about it because you should take it seriously, because this, this is serious business, and it affects people's lives.
Thank you.
Councilman Hamilton will ask the next question.
The city of Troy recently appointed a group of residents to define open and green space, analyze our current inventory, compare the city of Troy to other surrounding cities, and make recommendations. How would you handle a recommendation for a dedicated millage to maintain, enhance, and expand the city of Troy's green space?
I'm sorry, well, I recommend, they, they came back with a recommendation for...
And I, and not, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be a dedicated millage, but how would you manage, enhance, and expand the city of Troy's green space, or protect it? It could involve a millage.
Again, you, you've got a lot, and I think, and I think the inventory of knowing what you have is, is, is critical, right? Even if communities are smaller, and we start talking about all the, all the public, all the public lands, all the public things that we own, all the things we take care of, and if you don't have a good, you know, asset inventory of that, if you don't have, you don't have the actual data, it's amazing how much stuff that, how much stuff you own you don't realize you have, right? Not only land, but just, you know, look in your garage, but, so I think the critical thing is, one, you've got, you've got to have your hands around it to know, to know what's there. Let's take a look at what our, what our annual operations, maintenance, and repair that is, what are our capital costs going on with that on a yearly basis? You're only going to sit down with, with your, with your parks and park people, with your DPW people, I think probably jointly, because they, they're going to have the best idea of what those facilities, what the condition of them are, what's, what's really going to be critical in the next five to 10 years to be replaced. So I think you just take, it takes a lot of work on the front end, and I, I, you don't want to overplan it, but I think, especially if you're going out and asking for public money, you need to be able to understand, one, that you're asking for, and what, what really, what I've seen other communities really fail at is that, okay, we need, we're going to go out and ask for, we're going to ask for a quarter mil for parks. Why? Because that sounds like a really good number. I think people will support that. And the people in the past, and then all of a sudden, you get, you know, you get, you get the revenue in, and, man, that's not enough to do what we wanted to do. And then you've got to go back to people and say, "Well, you, you passed this millage, and that trail over in that park still looks awful, and you said you were passing this millage to pay for, you know, to take care of all that. Why, why, how did that happen?" And then you've got to come in hat in hand and say, "Well, you know, the reality was, we actually, you know, I don't..." Now, now you're already, you've already lost. Now, now, now you don't look great. You don't look like you, you had your, your ducks in a row, because you went out for what you thought was maybe politically expedient without matching that necessarily with what, with what your, your needs were. So I, I think if you haven't done, you got to, you got to, you know, you got to work with, with the administrative staff to get those numbers in place and say, you know, "Here's, here's what we think we need, here's, you know, if you're going to go out for a millage, or do you have the money internally to fund these operations?" And I, yeah, you really don't like it when you, "Oh, we've got this great new revenue source, and oh, by the way, we forgot to tell you that, yeah, the pool needs $800,000 worth of work," and you just, you know, now you go, "Oh, jeez, you didn't, you didn't see that part coming." So you've got to know those, you've got to know those going in to be successful. And I think that's just the responsibility of administration to get it, you know, you're going to alter like the policy decision, right? Is that going to go on the ballot? Is it not going to go on the ballot? What's the amount going to be? And you're going to make the decision that you make, but I, I've, I've got to be able to back it up to say, "Here's what we think the needs are, and here's what that money will generate, and here's how we can, we can operate the way you want to operate."
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Henderson will ask the next question.
So I'm going to vary from the, from the script here a little bit. I've been given authorization by the city attorney that it's okay if I move my third question up in case we don't have time, so...
Okay.
The, the question that's come to us since our last meeting is, you know, you coming from a small community to a much larger community, our employee base is knocking at the door of almost 400. Your employee base in Beverly Hills, not so much. So how do you, how do you, how do you plan to delegate, and, and how do you see that? What's your idea of your capability of coming in and being able to make, make that jump?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good question. I think it's a question I've already talked about, I had a good chance to talk about with the employees, and then some also with the residents, and I, I think I really referenced it in terms of kind of the scalability of, of, of your leadership style. I, this is one of the, this is one of the, maybe one of the grand theories, I think we talked about some type of local government management, but, you know, everybody, what's really harder is it to manage the large organization, it's complex, a lot of employees, and multiple things going on, or is it, is it working down at the, at the lower level where there's, you're right on the front lines, and you may do 11 different things that day, including go out and, go out and corral a dog in the parking lot, I've done that. Shovel stone in the, in the, in the park planters, I did that too because somebody was sick that day. They won't let me drive the plow truck, probably for good reason. Because I've worked, and that's, that's been my career, I've worked in, I've worked in smaller governments. I mean, I've, I've been, I've been the front guy there before. I've had to, I've had to sit, even at my current job, I've had to sit and pull a ship before, just, just grabbing the phone because two people are sick and somebody's got to go eat, and you've, you've got to do that. So I think, in my, my opinion, because it's going to be my opinion, because this is my, this is the way I've done it, but I think it's easier to scale that up into, into an organization, because you've developed some of the, the, you, you can, you can, you can empathize with the employees, you know what they're going on, you know what it's like to be yelled at over a water bill? I do, I've had it many times. I, I understand what it's like to, somebody not understand their tax bill, and you've got to explain it to them, but you don't even understand why their assessment went up, when, when the water's running through in the basement, and they don't know why. And I've, I've filled all those calls, I've been in those houses, I've set at the kitchen tables, and I, and I've done that. And I think because I've, even though I don't, you know, I don't have the, I don't have, you know, the credentials necessarily or the skills, but having been involved in it, I think it's easier to be empathized with, with the employees and what they're doing, and being able to direct them with my experiences, getting their experiences back, and to scale that model up. I've had other colleagues of mine who've, I've, I think I was talking to some, some before about, you know, they've worked in larger cities, and then before I've ever used a career pass, but they find themselves in a, in a smaller community, and you almost see, you know, almost see like the shell shock looked on their face, they're like, "And what happened?" Well, the, the insulation was removed, right? They, when the bigger community had all this insulation between you and the front, and the frontline of the problems. And all of a sudden, you know, they're, they're feeling a lot of that stuff. I've had, I've brought other employees in from agencies like the road commission, and they come to, they sit in the office sometimes, they go, "We didn't have some of these at the road commission." Well, yeah, it's, it's just a different operation, and you're, you're right on the front line, and you're going to talk to that person about, you know, why you got to cut that tree down, and then the neighbor's going to yell at you because you didn't cut it down two years ago, and they don't, you know, it's, it's the frontline operations that I, that I think I've been able to do, and I, I think it's easier to scale that up as you move along in your career than to work it the other way. And I, I've, some of the hardest jobs in this profession, honestly, are the jobs in towns of three, four, 5,000 people, because you maybe call it on to do everything in a single day, and it is daunting, and I've gone home before at times and fallen asleep and woken up and not remember what day it was, because I just fell asleep for a couple hours. But you were just mentally, soul drained at the end of the day, because it's, it's, that's, that's, that's difficult. I'm not saying large organizations are not, not difficult, it's, but it's, it's different. It's, it's a different, and I think, I think I put the time in, I think I've done enough different things, I think I've, you know, I've benefited a lot from the people that I've worked with, both in the private sector and the public sector, that I think I've got the time in now and experienced them to be able to make, to make that step.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodrick will ask the next question.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. The city of Troy has an exceptional bond rating, AAA, and an outstanding Class III ISO rating. What is your experience and knowledge of these types of ratings, and how do you propose to maintain these very important ratings?
Yeah, on the, on the ISO rating, I'll just, I'll just brag, but with the Village of Beverly Hills, we actually got a high ISO rating here, but we rated it a three. I think that was rare for a public safety department. The Village of Beverly Hills is public safety. We are, all of our officers are cross-trained as police officers, firefighters, and medical first responders, with a, a few, we have a few EMTs, you know, within, within a department. But public safety was never considered, you know, on the professional, on the same level as full-time professional firefighters. So when we got that ISO level three rating, it was something we were quite proud of, and it was, it was a joint effort, a lot of operations improvements on the part of the, of the, of the department, council really pushing me to buy better equipment, that I was almost hesitant on at times, and they, you know, and looking back, they were right. We had tried to push some of the, some of our equipment was fully depreciated at the time, and, and we needed some serious upgrades into our, our vehicles, and their firefighter, and their capacity, and council was on the forefront of that, not, not, not me, and I, I was late to come around to that. I think I've learned from that. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a continual, really continual ongoing process, and there's a, there's a periodic grading process you go through, that ISO rating, but again, the preparation of that is, is, is pretty key, and you can find out, there's, you find out other people that have been through the process, I think it's great to talk with them, to know what the writer is going to be looking for, but it, but it's something, if you wait, if you wait until you're coming right into the ISO process to, to, to prepare for that, you're going, you're going to run the risk of being, being behind. And it's important, it makes, it makes the, making those, obviously, it's a, it's a reflection of your ability to fight fires and provide a little public safety. It also makes a big impact on the homeowners insurance rates for your, for your residents, and it's something they certainly appreciate. You know, on the, on the bond rating side, I have familiar with, with the, Troy's bond rating. The Village, I think, in the time I've been there in ten years, we've been able to greatly increase our, our pension and our OPEB funding, we've greatly reduced those liabilities. Our overall debt load, I've, I've been told by, by Plan B around a couple occasions, we're almost, we're almost comically low. And that, you know, that's, that's a funny thing, we, we, I think we're, I think we currently have outstanding, just under $3 million of debt, which includes interest. Man, that's going to be paid off quite rapidly, and we'll, we'll be under $1 million total outstanding debt probably within five years if we don't borrow anything else, and we may for a water being private coming up, but, you know, that's just, that's just a, a different form of cash flow that, that you need to manage. I've even made the argument at times, "The council's pretty debt-averse, and that's a fine way to manage it." Money's been cheap for the last eight, 10 years, and we didn't get any of that cheap money, and it's going to be more expensive tomorrow than it is today, and certainly five years from now. So, but I think we've done a pretty adequate job of setting those, setting those funds aside. So, yeah, I think you look at your, your, your overall debt, and you've got to mirror that, I think, with your capital reserves, and a good understanding of what your capital liabilities are going to be. I mean, it's, it's great, I, the rating agencies have their own, their own, it goes, it's more of a holistic approach. I tend to look at it more from the capital management aspect, and, and what are we, what are, what are we paying, what are we borrowing for, what are we paying for on a pay-as-you-go basis? And some of the things that I, I think you've got to be careful with that, especially if you get into some of the state revolving loan issues, is that, I think I've heard murders reported of this now, it's going to be, you'll hear this term coming forth probably, generational, it's called generational equity. And I think what they found is that if, particularly with some of the state programs, if you take a water tower that you bonded for, and you paid off over 40 years, and now you get another, you know, you get, you get money from the state and that you bond that off, the state's going to also say, "Okay, when you pay off those bonds, we want you to also set aside enough money for the end of the life, end of the usable life of this tower." You don't have to, you don't have to bond for it again, right? You've got cash set aside, so you fully, you fully fund all depreciation on that asset, and you pay for it at the end, which is great, that, that's a great idea. But if you look at it from the other side, what you're really doing is you're making one generation of users by two pieces of equipment, right? So because you, because you borrowed for the last one, then you used it, paid it off. Now you're going to borrow for this one, you're going to pay that one off, and then you're making this generation of users pay for, pay for the next one. So I, I, I think, I sometimes think we, we start thinking about setting aside this cash for capital assets, and I think you need to take a little bit of a historical approach to that. If you, if you always bonded for something, and now you, you bond for it, and you set aside the money for the next one at the same time, you may, you may be asking one generation of users to pay for two, and then the next generation's going to get something for free. I think Gen X people feel bad about that. I think, I think we're specifically so. I'm not saying, not, not, not to get into a generational battle here, but we feel put upon, how about that? But I, I, I think that's part of the aspect that, that's mixed, and, and you need, you know, be careful that you don't, because what I've seen is that when you don't have a great concept of that, if you don't, if you don't take that into account, then all of a sudden that asset, you know, all of a sudden, "Boy, wow, the, the, you know, the budget hit on this was huge." Well, that's because you're fully funding the depreciation at the same time you're paying off that bond. You're buying two, you're buying this one, the next one, at the same time, and it can throw your enterprise funds particularly into, into a rear. a rear. So I just be, be cognizant of that going in. It's, it's, it's a great thing to do, but if you're making that switch from debt financing to fully funding your depreciation, realize you're jumping ahead almost two levels in, in the way you're financing something. And it makes, and the operation, it makes a big difference.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington will ask the next question.
Chris, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Approximately two-thirds of the city staff, full-time staff, is unionized. In June 2019, Troy will have two collective bargaining agreements expiring: police command officers and fire staff officers. Tell us about your collective bargain experience, including your experience with interest-based bargaining. Also explain how you have dealt with any previous impacts in negotiations.
We only had an hour, right? I think probably, I think one of the things I'm probably the most proud of, I think, in the village, um, I just signed five-year and five-and-a-half-year contracts with my PSL officers and command officers respectively. Uh, we were coming off periods of, I think, four-year contracts for both of them. We've had a period of, well, we're in the middle of it and it will continue forward, I believe, of probably a decade of relative labor peace. That wasn't easily arrived at. And, um, upon my first couple of years of being there, we got involved in two very, um, difficult, difficult, professionally difficult at times, personally arbitration decisions. Um, binding arbitration, it, it, that can almost be, um, you know, the public policy equivalent of mutually assured destruction. I mean, you go through it, you never wanna go through it again. And I think both sides learned their lessons. And I had a talk with one of, one of the employees who was asking me about this. And, um, yeah, those things, those, those, those are hard, those are hard discussions to have, right? And the employee, employees have what they deserve, what they, what they feel like, and, and I agree, and I've gotta make this work with a level of public financing. And, and again, that's something that can go, that can go personal and contentious very, very easily. Um, and they're, and, no, sorry, Lori, but there's always attorneys involved too, right? And that makes it, that makes it great too. They're, they're private, they're the contractors, right? The union brings theirs and I bring mine. And that, that doesn't seem to get us closer to the fifty-yard line ever. But, um, I, well, I think what I've learned is that as hard as, as hard as those discussions are sometimes to have between myself and administration and the unionists and the union, we're the ones that are gonna live with those contracts at the end, right? Not even, not even the attorneys, right? They, they, they don't have to implement the nuts and bolts of that contract. You go into an arbitrator, now you're another level even removed, removed away. So if you can't decide it on your own, you're gonna have somebody decide it who doesn't have any skin in the game, who's not gonna be responsible for administering that contract. And, and after I went through the PSL arbitration and you get things that you realize are kinda counterintuitive from one decision to the next. And now I've gotta, I've gotta rework out, I've gotta schedule this time off and I gotta, I gotta pay for more. But while you realize, this is a scheduling nightmare. And I have the P, I really had the PSL union come to me after the arbitration decision came down and said, "Can we, like, horse trade some of these?" And I'm like, "Man, yeah, I'd, I'd love to, but no, that's the problem now. You can't." Now, this is, this is, this has been, this has been set in stone by, by an arbitrator. And you know why? Because we decided, we were so mad at each other, we weren't gonna be able to get along, we couldn't come to a decision. So we farmed it out. We farmed out our authority to a third person who's now not responsible for it. And you look back and you go, "Man, that was foolish." And it was on, on all parts around. I think we all learned our lesson. And, um, with this last contract, our longtime city attorney, Dennis DeBaie, I think you might have, might have seen Dennis around here too. Dennis had done everything. And Dennis had retired. And I told the, the, uh, the new attorneys, "Hey, we got contracts coming up. Take a look at them. Here's what I think the issues are." And he called me back and he said, "Man, I, I was prepared to make this big list of things you've gotta address." And he said, "They're, they're all done." And we really sat down with him, we went over wages and I think a couple of other issues. And we got five and five-year contracts. Long-term contracts have their own, you know, there's risk on both sides of doing that. But, uh, and just the operational savings, I think, that are in there on a year-to-year basis. You know, we were, we were going with three-year contracts that were a year and a half expired by the time we got unresolved. That takes up so much operational capacity, so much your administrative capacity, sucks the life out of the room. And now, and now they're not worried about it. I don't want, the public safety jobs are tough enough as it is. I don't want a guy out there, you know, on, on the road, in a car, or, or even, you know, going into, going into a structure, thinking about how mad I am about, um, you know, the 401K aspect of it. That, that's, that's not good for them. It's not good for the citizens. It's dangerous for them. Um, and they don't, we, we gotta take a responsibility. And I think that's the biggest lesson I've learned. And I, and I hope, I, I, I think the other side learned that as well. We've gotta, we've gotta be able to come to a decision. 'Cause, 'cause substituting somebody else's authority for yours doesn't work out for anybody. And hopefully it didn't work out for the residents, I think.
Thank you. I'll ask the next question, but, um, it's somewhat similar to the question that, um, Councilman Henderson went off-script a little bit here.
Sorry.
But, um, it's similar, but I'll still ask the same question. What do you believe will be the biggest challenge of transition, transitioning from your roles as city manager of communities significantly smaller than Troy to the Troy city manager position? How do you plan to address that challenge?
Yeah, I already struggle in my current job with, uh, with delegation and I've gotta get better at that. I've, I even have my assistant who, it's just 'cause this is the way I came up in the profession. My assistant will look at me at the copy machine and I'm collating, you know, forty copies or something. They're just like, "Really? What, what, what are you doing?" I'm making copies. I'm proud of the fact I can run the machine. My, my, my male employees older than me can't. They come to me to help me use it. But yeah, I realize I, you know, I, I think I've actually failed at times in making the employees think I didn't have confidence in their abilities to do something because I didn't delegate enough things. They, they, they look, they look down the hall and think, "Why, why is that I'm doing that? I can be doing that." And it wasn't conscious, it was just, it was because of, because of my, my background, the way I've brought up, I just, I, I did everything. And I've gotta get better at delegating that. And I, and I've learned as I've done it, man, it's, it's great. It's great to take things off that list of seventeen things that you've gotta do that day. And that one that's gonna take you two days because you're gonna get started, somebody's gonna interrupt you and, and you're gonna do it, but you're not gonna do a great job at it, but you're gonna get checked off your list. And you give it to somebody else and they do it an hour later and you come back and, "Man, that looks better going on with the good done." And now it's not like, it's a great feeling. And they feel better about it. They feel, they feel happy and you feel happy. And I, I think that's probably the, the biggest thing is, is just taking proper advantage of, um, of the capacity around me. And I, and I've, um, I've siloed too much of that off at times to myself and trying to do it. 'Cause I've been really oppressed when I could go to the other department and ask, "Look at all the stuff that I did." And in reality, they should've been doing that, bringing it back to me. I shouldn't have been revising it with them. Um, because those are experiences they, they need too, right? I mean, or none of us are, none of us are guaranteed tomorrow, right? So I, if I've siloed all that off into my, into my department and I'm not there, uh, tomorrow, that's, that's an opportunity lost for them to have done it. And I, I'm better off to have, to have taught and directed that and be able to get somebody else to do what I could've done than to just keep doing, to keep doing it myself. I think that's where you can really add value to the organization.
Mayor Protem Baker.
Thank you. Probably won't shock my fellow council members that this is the question I'm asking. The city of Troy offers a shuttle service in the Big Beaver Corridor. This service was intended to be at least partially funded by businesses in the corridor. After two years of service and many attempts to receive sponsorships, the city is fully funding the service through general fund dollars. How would you analyze a city service to determine if it is successful and sustainable?
Well, there's, there's, I mean, there's simply, there's all kinds of metrics. And I know, I actually know from looking through some of your budget, I was really impressed with some of the, the metrics that you, that you put together. And I think you've got really good data and I like that. So I, you, you can take a look at the performance metrics. But, um, yeah, I think you gotta back out from a thirty-thousand-foot view on that and what is it that we're running? What's, what's the purpose of it? Um, I, I don't get into the, you know, this public-private distinction, but, uh, certainly in areas like that, technology changes, things, things change over time. Is this something that's already being addressed on, on, on the private sector that we're either replicating and maybe doing a different version of? Is that something that's, that's already out there? Is it something that the businesses really need? And if it's servicing them, okay, maybe there's, maybe there's a public interest in, in putting, putting the public funding behind it and, and, and doing it. But I think you better, I, it, it's unusual because that's, I'm not unusual, but that's pu, that's public money for, for, for a private good. All right? So where's, where's the public, what's, what's the public benefit of that? Uh, if you're, if you're, if you're shuttling people, you know, shuttling people around, uh, Somerset, um, I mean, that's great. We could, we could, we could, we could buy people to carry bags to the car. Is that, is that the public responsibility or is that, is that private responsibility? Maybe it's a, maybe it's a PPP opportunity there. Um, so if you're fully funding it out of your general fund, uh, I think I would take a very close look at, at ridership. Make sure you have a good idea of what's the public benefit of that. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not gonna be presumptuous enough to know about the program and say that it's not there. I mean, if you're shuttling shoppers up and down the corridor, that, that's great, right? If you're taking people, um, on Friday and Saturday night, you probably shouldn't be driving up and down the corridor from place to place. I think that's a huge benefit in that, right? I, I mean, let's, let's, let's be realistic. Maybe some of those sick people, um, but is, does Uber or Lyft provide the same service? Are there, are there taxi services that can provide the same? So, I, that's, that's the way I would look at it. I think I would try to back up more from a, from a purely analytical standpoint and say, you know, where's, where's the public interest here? Where's the, the public good? Uh, and if I can find it, then make sure that we're, we're providing it in the, in the most, um, uh, economic and reasonable fashion.
Councilwoman Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this is a good one. One of the largest challenges for the city of Troy is funding its capital needs. Troy is unique in that we have a dedicated, uh, capital millage. However, the Headley rollback has reduced the millage rate. The increasing demand for capital needs and the reduction in funding has caused the city to evaluate its, its planning process. What method would you propose to evaluate and prioritize these capital needs to select what receives funding? How, uh, how would you explain to department heads and the public if there was a need that did not receive funding?
There's likely one out there.
Yes.
Yeah, if, I, I, my first, I, and I, and I think we as municipalities and organizations have done a bad job with this. The continued, um, impact of both proposal A and Headley on revenue streams, particularly built out in developed communities, is, is, is just bad public policy. And the way that's been implemented by the state has been wrong. It's been wrong for twenty years. Uh, trying to talk to the legislature about it and, uh, I think sometimes those guys are new and their eyes start to glaze over. Uh, you're, you're really, you're really butting up against what's, what's, what's been a poor public policy. And we've, uh, the Headley rollbacks, um, combined with the proposal A limitations, I, I think, uh, Headley was fine, proposal A was fine in itself, the extent of the impact of both of them. Um, they should've probably canceled each other out at one point. Or the state should've had a different, uh, particularly in the, in regards to the pop-up issue. I know that's been around for a long time. I don't think the state's been, been wrong on that. It's been to the detriment of communities like this and to the benefit of, of Ringtone communities. I'm off some bugs on, on, on that issue. But I, it's really, it's, it's a failure of state public policy. I think we need to do a better job through the MML and through our direct elected representatives, make them aware of that, aware of the inequities in that and why it's harming this place and how it's, how it's, how it's, um, harming our, our interior suburban communities. Um, on the, you know, on the capital asset side, again, I, I don't, um, I'm not here to make work for, for, for other firms, but, um, to me, that's really about a, a, a long-term planning process. Um, continuing, you have continuing monitoring and evaluation of your infrastructure. Um, even the stuff that, that you can't see. We were able to do, uh, I think you guys were participating with Solong Grant as well, as, as we did too. We were able to televise every single mile of our existing sewer system and get, and get good data on that. That's something that's changing. It's hard to identify. It's hard to see 'cause, 'cause people, you know, you don't see it as much. Um, but also working directly with, with, with public works crew and your engineers, where they, they know where, where the water main breaks are occurring. You know, they've, they've got, they've got all the information, um, on, on this, on the age and, and on the classification of your system. So you know where you can, where you can target those, those funds. And it's simply, it's not that complicated. It's kind of a triage approach, um, to know where the, where the worst problems are. And if, if you can continually, I think, go, go after the worst and, and, you know, make those progress. But the roads, I mean, everybody sees that. Everybody's road's awful. Everybody's is the worst in town. Um, I, I imagine, I have, I have, I think at last count, thirty-seven streets that are always the last to get plowed. I don't know how that works. I'm not sure how that works in my town, but it's some kind of geographic anomaly. Um, yeah, it's, those, those are, those are, those are tough, those are tough decisions that have to be made. And again, I, I think the, the more data, um, the more data you have, I, I'm, I'm kind of a map guy. I like maps. It's, it's sort of my thing. I, if, if, um, if a picture's worth a thousand words, a map can be worth a million statistics. I think when you can show it to people spatially, it makes all the difference in the world. You can talk about roads all day long. When you get that nice road analyzing system and you color-code it right, and, and it sounds simple, that, that draws a picture. People understand that then. And I think it's critical to get, to get the, get that information out there. Um, but again, I, it's, it's a matter of, of priority and understanding your revenue streams. And you're right, if you, um, in a community like this, Headley's gonna, Headley's gonna have an impact. And, uh, I, I think I would, as long as that's gonna be the case, um, you may look at, well, I think what we've, what we've determined is sometimes those capital, those capital funds have a fix, have a, have a sunset date that'll build in. So that they automatically either expire or they get renewed. And they get renewed, they get renewed again at, at a fixed rate. So it kinda resets that, that Headley clock. And I think that's, that's been, that's been beneficial. 'Cause I was thinking before, "Oh, man, those folks are horrible, right? They had one and it's had to go forever." Well, the reality is with Headley, I think there's some, there's some merit because you just don't know where you're gonna be with, with, with the impact of those two, ten years from now. So if those things reset, it gives you the automatic opportunity to reset, reanalyze, uh, what your revenue needs are gonna be and to explain that to the public. Um, so I think it's where politically, that this might be more difficult to do with a millage that's there in perpetuity. Uh, with us, with the mills that automatically sunsets, okay, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's the poison pill, right? Now you can't, you can't avoid it. You gotta deal with it. And it, and it puts those things up front and center. And I, and I think those are, I think those are worthwhile tools to have within your, your, or any of your, your à la carte millages. Um, 'cause you, you don't, you don't wanna play, you don't wanna put those things out there, put them at risk. But the reality is the current, the current, until that funding, the revenue system changes, um, yeah, the, the Headley rollbacks are gonna continue to be a problem.
Councilman Henderson.
So although, although not disclosed in your response in your previous interview, I learned about the lead testing issue Beverly Hills villages having with the MDQ. Could you please comment on that situation specifically with regard to the disclosure of, of information to the public, your role in addressing it, and what you learned?
Oh, man, yeah, that's a great one. Um, that's been one of the great lessons learned. We, you know, every, um, you might find in, in a, it's one of my favorite sayings, I think, that I was quoted somewhere on Michigan Public Radio as saying that the village was, we were paying for the, the village was being forced to pay for the sins of the father of the state had fled, um, with their, with their recent, uh, actions. Again, I've had very harsh discussions with the MDQ on this. And I, and I think where they, and I, and I will stand behind that statement. And I, it was my own fault because I was prophetic. And I said this at a meeting one time of, uh, of city managers. I said, "You guys realize the state has messed up so bad and fled that we're all gonna pay for it now. I don't know how, we're all gonna pay for it." And it hit my community first. Um, I think, I think the MDQ was wrong in putting out a narrative that there was a, a problem with a, a potential lead problem and a health problem in the village. That narrative was not true. It's, wasn't true then. It's never, it's never been true. Um, based upon the current standards in our community, we were required to take five lead tests every three years at five residents in, in five homes in the community. We had one test that came back, um, at a rate that was higher, not only than any rate we've ever had in the village, any rate that it ever tested in any, in any Sauqua community, any rate that we could ever find replicated anywhere within southeast Michigan. It was one of those things that was kinda truly an anomaly. And it really threw us for a loop. Um, we worked with the homeowner. We found out there was a lead service line in that house, which, uh, we don't, which we do not have very many of. We have very few. We replaced that immediately. Um, and upon retesting at that house after the line was placed, you know, the, the lead numbers went from, from the two-hundred-and-twenty's down to less than two. Um, we can never replicate that high test level, uh, at any case. And I had, we even have an administrative review with the DEQ and I, I, my, my entire contention was, "You're gonna put a narrative out there that there's, there's a, there's a problem with, with, with the lead, well, with, with the water pool in this entire community." You're not taking into account, this water all comes from the same source. It all comes out of the same pipe out of Lake Huron. It goes to all communities within southeast Michigan. The Sauqua Tower, you know, you guys are not one of the Sauqua communities, but we are. There's twelve different communities that all get from the same water source. There's no separate water source here. I don't have my own water source here in the village, as opposed to Bingham Farms or Southfield. So you're putting out a, a bad narrative. Um, and I just think their science, to me, their science on it was, was, was not great. You took, you took five samples in a community of forty-two-hundred homes and used this ninetieth percentile average to determine what was the lead contamination. Well, that, if you put, I've, if you put the, the DQ set that dealt with under a roll, they would probably tell you that's not good science. It came out, directly came out of the legislation passed by the state, but I don't think it was good public policy. It was good public health policy. So what we were, what we objected to the most was that you're putting out, in the wake of everything else that's gone on in the state, you're putting out a narrative that we have a lead problem in this community that we don't believe is true. I think you don't believe it's true. But now you're forcing us to, to, to air this, to air this to the public. And I, I was really concerned about, um, the, the public scare and the, and the lack of confidence in the water system that was gonna be created. And it was, it was unnecessary. Um, but they disagreed with us. So we went for, we were put under this, a certain protocol, which we have to do sixty, uh, we were required now to test sixty homes on a, uh, on a, every six-month basis, which we're doing. We're not testing sixty. I did the last round of testing, I did a hundred-and-forty-four. 'Cause my response back to the DEQ was, "How am I gonna pick sixty in this community when you've told everybody in the community I have a problem with the water?" I don't, but you told people that. So we just opened up the entire community. We broadcast it many times. "If you want your water tested, call us. We'll put you on the list. I'll give you a house built three years ago or a hundred-and-fifteen years ago." We tested everybody the same. We had to bite the bullet on the cost. The test for twenty-five dollars. It wasn't, wasn't that bad. But I felt it was a porn for us to get that message out there. We will test everybody. Uh, I think for the, we're gonna be starting another round of testing in December. We'll be up to a hundred-and-sixty-six. Out of the hundred-and-forty-eight we had, all of them came in less than the fifteen parts per billion, um, standard, which I, I knew they were. Seventy-five percent of them were less than, uh, less than one part per billion. Um, so I think we had, we had some odd anomaly in, in one test. And I just think the DEQ, because of the other issues that were going on, you know, there is cer, there is a thing called bureaucratic discretion. And they were so, I think they were so burned by everything going, by everything else that had happened to them, they lost focus of what we're supposed to be. We're just here treating, uh, helping to treat. There are communities around that do have, that do have a lot of lead service lines and they... and they should be, you know, we should be always. The other thing that really angered me in talking to the DEQ was I come to find out that we were one of the handful, we were one of the, not the few, but there was a number of communities that aren't even getting the samples in on time, on a timely basis. Our samples are all submitted on a timely basis, and the other communities were, and why they weren't going after those, I don't know. So it was, it was a long process. I've completely revamped our testing process, and I've been the John the Baptist on this to all my colleagues. Take a really close look at those tests you do every three years. Don't test the minimum, because if you get one, if you get one sample, that's, even if you can't replicate it, you know, that counts. And it's a good idea, just frankly, the more you test. We'll probably be testing forty or fifty every three years. We're going to run our next test of a hundred and sixty-six homes. We had great cooperation from the public. And it's where, I think it's worked out, it's worked out as well as it could have, but it's been a tremendous use of public resources that I don't think were spent in a productive manner. I think the DEQ and the village could have put that money to much better use and not, again, put out this false narrative that there was somehow, there was a lead issue community-wide, which just wasn't accurate.
So back to the actual questions. Sorry. So the City of Troy's residents are a very diverse group, not only culturally, but in age and philosophy as well. There have been different demands for city services and different opinions on whether the city should be progressive or remain the same. We've seen this in a proposed civic center redevelopment here, private developments with higher housing density and infill development. What is your approach to address the generational and philosophical difference in the community while continuing to move the city forward?
I love the notion of community remaining the same forever, right? I think that's a bit of a misnomer. Communities don't remain the same. They're living organisms. They change, they change all the time. Change is constant. They can change for the better, they can change for the worse. Just because it changes doesn't mean it's always going to be better. But it's really difficult for something to stay the same forever. That's just, history kind of tells us that. If there's not some level of change going on, you tend to have decline. And you can go around, you can go around to a lot of communities that find, you know, where maybe the housing stock or the business, or the business mix hasn't changed much in forty or fifty or sixty years, right? That's out there. Those aren't the communities that people are flocking to like they flock to Troy. I think the real issue there is how do you manage the change? How do you manage the change to create a result that you want? If you leave it, you know, wide open and don't have a, don't have a larger goal to that, to that change, then, I mean, developers will come in, they'll build what they're going to build, and they're going to make their money, and they're leaving, you're going to be, you're going to be left with the consequences. They may be good, they may be bad. But I think you need to be, again, you need to be ahead of that problem, realizing these things are going to change. The neighborhoods, there's going to be change in the neighborhoods, there are going to be change among our business corridors. What do we want that change to be? What do we want the result of that, of that change to be? And I think we had a lot of this discussion here. I think the thing that I would be concerned about in Troy, and I'm concerned about in my own community right now, was to continue to maintain the good, I think the appropriate mix of residential housing stock that you have. As you see certain homes being, you know, there's either new subdivisions going in or homes being torn down and being rebuilt, you see a lot of the same things going on. And that's because that's, that's what drives, you know, that's what drives a profit. But I think it would be a shame if, we often think about diversity, we think about it in racial terms, and that's good. There's also like economic diversity, right? I think there's a great benefit to the community to have, within one functioning community, having doctors and professionals and bankers and guys who work on the line for Ford and guys who run their own landscaping business, all working together. That's good for the community. That's good for the kids to grow up in the schools and have communities like that have that mix. My concern is that if this housing stock turns over in a way that's not properly managed, the risk of me becoming simply an enclave of residential homes that are not affordable to a significant number of people who would otherwise live here and contribute positively to this community and raise their kids here and be a part of this community for generations. I have nothing against, you know, the nice subdivision of seven, eight hundred thousand dollar homes. Those are great. I love them. They're nice to look at and fantasize about. But the reality is, you know, thirty-five thousand of those by themselves don't make a community. You need, you need the proper mix. And I understand the developer's plight. It's hard to tear down a starter home that's been there for fifty years and replace it with a starter home and further your business, right? So I think that's where we need to come in, again, to manage that change a little bit to make sure this community remains open to young families, to even to people who are looking to retire out of that large home because their kids are gone, and the empty nesters, and they want to find, you know, a ranch house with eleven hundred square feet on a manageable lot for them. You know, we need that appropriate mix. If it's just left strictly to the market, because the market's going to push it to the highest and best use, there's going to be people that are going to be left out of that. And I think it'll be to a long-term detriment of this community and the residents.
Chris, we have three minutes to go, so I'm going to ask the last question. Based on the research of your understanding of the city, how are you specifically the best candidate for the city manager position?
Yeah, I, I'll leave that to your discretion. I don't know that I, I don't know that I am. I'm confident I can do the job or I wouldn't be here. I think I've got the record to prove that I think I'm ready to take this step in my professional career. I don't, I don't, I can't speak to Rex. I don't know Rex very well. I've met him, he seemed like a nice man. I've known Victor for a long time. Victor's a very good city manager, I think, very highly of him. I told Victor, I'm going through this process against you, you're like, you're Apollo and I'm Rocky. I leave that to your discretion, that I'm, that I'm the right guy for the job. If I wasn't, if I wasn't confident that I could do the job, I wouldn't be here. I would put myself in that spot to step up and fail. I've got, I've got a job I'm not failing at, I think, as best I know. I'm not going to walk away from that and walk over here if I didn't think, I didn't think I could do the job. I think, I went into it in the last round with the time, I won't go into it anymore, but I think I have the experience, the personal and professional experience to handle the issues, the immediate issues that the community faces. And I think I have the analytical skills and the tools I developed, I think, to direct the city where it wants to go in the long term. Am I the best guy for the job? It's not fair for me to say that. I think you have really, I think you have really good candidates, and I don't envy your choices. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Chris. Well done. Session, our next candidate is Rex Sulkenen. Rex, it's good to see you in person.
Thanks, Aaron.
We Skyped with you the last time. And just to let you know, this is going to be very similar to what we did before. Each council person will ask you a question, will rotate it around the table once, and then we'll keep going until our hour is up.
Okay.
And I'll start with the first question. And as before, each question will be the same, or it will be similar to the content that is asked to all candidates. It might be a little different for each candidate, but the theme will be the same.
Okay, great.
I'll ask the first question.
Okay, great.
How would you describe your management and leadership style? Please identify strengths and weaknesses related to both your management and your leadership approach, and identify how you hold direct reports accountable for projects and/or issues that you've delegated to them.
My management style has always been collaborative with open communications, first and foremost. And what this means is that I trust, trust my team to ensure that they're always working well with me. And it's important, as a servant leader, to have both hands-on and hands-off responsibilities. Specifically, the way that I address this is, as a servant leader, I ensure that I'm a coach, I'm a mentor, a teacher and instructor, and that's been throughout my entire career. I use those same techniques during my time, wherever I'm at in the leadership position. With hands-off, that goes into delegation specifically. So after we've given people the attitude, skills and knowledge that they're required and able to work that together, then able to give them tasks, let them grow, to be able to show that we trust them. And this is, delegation is letting go as a leader. And it's an opportunity for them to grow themselves, to learn, and with the set deadlines, that ability then to come back. And this does a couple of different things. The strengths of all this is that it grows a successive team, so that you always have a bench that comes forward with this. A weakness that you could take a look at this is that it's a lot of trust. You can potentially have failure when it comes in these situations. But I find as many times that small failures are a way that we all learn, one way or the other. And then we talk about my leadership style. It is going to be proactive and flexible to each individual that works with me as part of the team, but is always holding them accountable. So when I say proactive, I'm a results-oriented leader. And that comes hand-in-hand with the way that I work with people as servant leaders, so that they have that opportunity to grow and move forward. Weaknesses with all these, again, are there's always a possibility of failure, but I always see that as a strength as well, because you give people those opportunities to fail in an environment where you're not going to throw them under the bus. They have to be able to grow themselves. And everything as a part of this is a learning experience for them. The reports that we have, when you're saying direct reports, you're talking about direct reporting personnel, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Even more so, direct reports are people that we give opportunities to. And for me, key to this is going to be during the performance reviews. I believe very strongly in this. It's an opportunity for them to also take a look at their individual development plans, which are hand-in-hand. So you're not only getting expectation and understanding that are set between the direct reports and that calls the city manager at the time, but this ensures that we also understand their aspirations, where they want to go, how they want to grow as individuals, how they grow as professionals. And my responsibility as a leader to help, help them move along in this manner. The best part about all of this is it grows not only accountability, it helps them motivate, it grows the team, and it ensures that the people that are working for you understand exactly what their roles and responsibilities are, certainly against the plan, policies and priorities that the council's set. And that helps the delegation in the way that they're able to move intent down into, into their directives and help to move our, our goals and mission forward, so that we give the best services to the city.
Mayor Proten Baker will ask the next question.
Rex, nice to meet you in person.
Happy to be here.
Currently, the Troy Public Library operates on a dedicated village. The current funding was designed to keep the library open six days per week, but there is a demand for the library to be open seven days a week. Some believe that the library should be funded by general funds. How will you address this concern when the millage expires in 2020? And how will you propose to fund a seven-day library? How would factors like the rising minimum wage and operating costs affect your plan?
I think the library is one of the most precious buildings that we have, but I'm also very experienced in what emotional buildings are all about. And I'll get to that in a little story here in just a little bit. When we take a look at how, how we're going to deal with different funds and where that moves and what the intent is, I believe thoroughly in the two-way dialogue that we have to have with our community on this. And this ensures that we have the best understanding from the people who are best going to use that and who could potentially be affected by it. I see that you have point seven mills that's been put against it right now, asking the community if they either want an increase in that millage, to have it be its own potential district. Do we want to have it to be coming out of general funds? Is that the only option that we have? Additionally, is, what do we want the library to look like in the future? Is it going to be just a library? Is it going to be a building that could potentially be a library in a senior citizen center? Could it be a combination of something else as we look at our capital improvement plan? So those would be all things I'd take into consideration. Certainly, I'd want to work hard with Mark Miller and some of the other teams with some of the ideas that they have, how they would want to move forward. And I'm sure that they have their own ideas that come forward. I think this is a key time for collaboration and direct discussions, so that we're meeting the intent and the vision of our community, and certainly the expectations of our community, so that we're moving forward in the right directions. Make sure I haven't missed anything else with your question here. But those would be all things that I would have, and certainly having that opportunity to grab friends of the library and other interested parties and having those direct discussions to help shape this would be the way that I would move forward on this. discussions to help shape this would be the way that I would move forward on this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham will ask the next question.
Nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
There are times when a governing body is divided. Please describe how you have dealt with this type of situation in the past. How were you able to keep operations running effectively and efficiently?
Okay. A little story time here, and I've got lots of stories, so just as long as you're prepared for that. When I was Chief of Operations for the 551st Special Operations Squadron, actually had a commander that was relieved. And during that time period, they wouldn't tell us as to why that happened, but very popular guy, combat veteran, and a lot of guys that flew with him in combat. But if they're in that same time period, there are people that believed that he shouldn't have been relieved, the guys that believed he should have been relieved. But this now became a point where it became not just personal, but now it actually hurt the profession. And as our jobs were to actually train people getting ready to go to combat, this was a serious effect that we had. And it came down to whether or not we could understand the reasons why that happened, and why this could be disclosed from legal means. So what we did is had to go up and ask the legal team as to how we could present this so we would be able to have everybody understand the way that this had happened, why the decisions had been made, and see if there's a way to make it work forward. Fortunately, we were able to get a legal read on it, we brought it forward, and I was able to bring everybody together and to have an open discussion with them to understand that this had gone past military bearing and professional demeanor, and the commander was rightly relieved. And this was the only way that we were able to move forward as a unit, to get back on our feet, to unify people back together, and then finally get back to where we need to be as a good team. You're welcome.
Councilwoman Hamilton will ask the next question.
Thank you for your service. The City of Troy recently appointed a group of residents to define open and green space, analyze our current inventory, compare the City of Troy to other surrounding cities, and make recommendations. How would you handle a recommendation, either for a dedicated village, or to use some funding to maintain, enhance, and expand the City of Troy's green space?
So we're listening to the residents, and the residents have spoken, and they would like to move forward on this. Getting the opportunity to move it in for decision and making a policy decision from the council, in my opinion, is really a very straightforward way of doing this. Now, one of the questions that I'd ask is certainly where it is, and what effects that would have on the rest of the staff, and some of the development issues that they would have, part of this to ensure that they had their two cents as they look at it. And we're still able to use the Green Space Subcommittee, I think this would be really a good opportunity to synchronize everybody together so that we're not stepping in other people's shoes in different areas. So this is clearly a development and a collaboration and a synchronization effort that needs to happen between all, rather than just having a single silo working. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Henderson, there's the next question.
So I'm going to go off reservation again, understanding that we ran out of time last time.
No worries.
A couple of questions that came to me after your first interview. You know, what experience does Rex specifically have with regard to infrastructure, streets, roads, plumbing? And then, and also further to that, policies and laws within the state, and funding and those types of things? What do you know about all of that?
Well, let me start with policies and laws in the state. That's been a bit of a challenge since I've been overseas for almost 20 years. I do know with some of the, we're talking specifically about infrastructure laws and policies, only what I can read in a book. And when you talk about zoning or anything that comes with that, nothing, nothing is going to be specific. But at the same time, I know that if appointed, I've got a great team, and I would rely very heavily on the staff that's there to steer me in the right direction and get up speed quickly. But when we talk about experience with infrastructure, significant. Certainly during my time, I've been overseas, working at RAF Mildenhall was responsible for a $288 million reconstruction of an airfield, as well as a military city that was there. So working with different zoning, putting together airfields, the infrastructure that has to come with that, all the plumbing and the heating, you know, whether it's 110 or 220, I have a pretty good understanding of some of the challenges that we had to go through. And then we also have the elements with, get back with buildings that have great emotional value. And I'll tell you a quick story. So as we were putting together and renovating different buildings, and whether we decided we were going to renovate, rebuild, or restore, we had come to one that had, that we were definitely going to be able to tear down, got the stop, cease, and desist from the British government, because not only was it a historical building, but also the ace mascot was buried in the floor. And so this was an important piece to the rest of the community. But what it taught us is that we have to make sure that we do all of our research, and understand all aspects of the buildings that we're trying to work with. And as we put the plan together, taking everything that we know about those buildings, the infrastructure that goes into them, and being able to evaluate whether this is going to be a health and safety, whether it's going to be a liability, or if it's going to be an effectiveness, meaning are we changing the building purely for the people that are inside versus the mission that has to happen? This is also important, and different works that I've done throughout Africa, and building different bases that have been there, and the work that I've done with the CE teams, the civil engineering teams that have been down there, in order to put all the infrastructure in place, so that we can operate and do missions.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Hodorik has the next question.
There, which one?
No worries.
Okay. Hi, Rex.
Hey.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you much, appreciate it.
The City of Troy has had an exceptional bond rating, AAA bond rating, and an outstanding Class III ISO rating. What is your experience and knowledge of these types of ratings, and how do you propose to maintain these very important ratings to the city?
Sure. And let me take the second one first. So certainly kudos to Chief Roberts and his team for achieving and maintaining an ISO of three, and the fact that they're only 2.99 points away from a two, I think that's outstanding. And the effect that this has specifically, it shows the readiness and preparedness of the fire suppression that's within the city. And also, it gives an opportunity for the chief to understand what benchmarks he has, what help he needs from the city, so that he can maintain or get to that next level two. What that also means is it's a lower homeowner insurance for both, well, homeowner and commercial insurance rates throughout the state, or should say, within the city. But this is also a means of drawing other commercial builders within the City of Troy, because this, on top of what we already have from Chief Nastasi and his team of being one of the safest, if not safest, cities within Michigan, now you've got a city that has outstanding fire suppression, so it shows it's even safer. And that's a good segue into AAA bond rating, realizing that we're fiscally responsible. Everything that Tom Darling and team have done, again, another award that he's won as part of his team, also couples with this, to show that being conservative, being excellent with the way that he has reserves, especially the Budget Stabilization Fund that he has within there to protect the general fund, which helps to ensure, which was really where Standard and Poor's looks, to see whether or not we're viable for that AAA bond rating. And then, only taking out bonds and associate with infrastructure changes that have to happen, or capital investments, so that they're never used for things such as operations. I think this fiscal responsibility is fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Pennington has the next question.
So Rex, thanks for coming.
Welcome.
This question, I'm going to change a little bit, because it doesn't, it's not fully applicable, but I'm going to read part of it and then change it on the fly here.
Got it.
Approximately two-thirds of the city staff is unionized. In June 2019, Troy will have two collective bargaining agreements expiring, police command officers and fire staff officers. Tell us about any collective bargaining experience you have, and then also explain how you have dealt with any previous impasse and negotiations. It doesn't have to be with unions, or possibly the expansions on the city that you worked with.
So my experience in collective bargaining has certainly been at the international side. During my time as Chief of Operations for Defense Institution Building, I was able to negotiate collective bargaining between the US and 21 different nations. That's actually a benchmark for Special Operations Command, it's never been met before or since. And this allowed us the ability to have access and to work and to do our security cooperation work in all those nations, but also the collective bargaining agreement itself allowed those nations to deploy, instead of US forces, helping to bring our forces out of theater, give them rest and recuperation, and then our return on investment was those guys getting in there and doing good work. When it comes to an impasse and a negotiation, during one of the negotiations that we had, I was sitting down with the Hungarian Air Force Commander and one of his aides, and as we were trying to move forward with this program with the Hungarians, they said specifically, we weren't going to move forward unless they got 21 helicopters out of this deal. Well, I looked at them and I said, well, you only have 12 helicopters in your entire military. Okay, I understand. Was it going to make a big deal about it? We have to maintain that relationship and that open communication during this time period. So we left, we went back, talked to the embassy, worked with the attache, that went over to the Minister of Defense, came back down, and obviously they took him out as a bad negotiator for this deal that we were having, and we couldn't move forward. But soon after that, we were able to make the deal, maintained our relationship that we have with Hungarian Air Force, and they've since deployed.
Thank you. I'll ask the next question. What is your, this is going to be similar to Councilman Henderson's, because he went off.
Off the reservation.
Went off the reservation again. What is your understanding of the expectations of the day-to-day demands of this position? And without direct city management experience, how do you plan on making the transition to get up to speed on state laws related to funding limitations, public employees, and other unique municipal circumstances?
I didn't read your question. Okay. So the expectations of day-to-day ops, and it certainly comes down to the job description that I applied for, and what I understand, it comes down to operations. So it becomes government liaison, and for me, that means the relationship that I have between working with the departments and the staff, and working specifically with you, and understanding your expectations and how I need to communicate with that. Getting the policies, turning them into strategy, and making a work plan that's proved and executable down to the departments, so that we're able to provide the services that the public expects of the city. On top of that, it's fiscal oversight as part of the budget planning process, certainly the work that Tom Darling and team are helping to do on a regular basis, and working with them to understand line by line that the strategy is matched with the budget, because these two should be synchronized, and the priorities that are in the budget should match with the priorities that are set in the strategy. And then, working with Jeanette Minnick, certainly as we hire and the practices in the department heads, this is the way that we understand how, what our staff looks like, how we're hiring, how we're working together, and that we're the correct reflection of our community, and getting the right attitude, skills, and knowledge into the departments. And then lastly, the community engagement itself. And not to brag, but I find somebody that is as good as me with community engagement, I find him to be hard-pressed. My experience over 25 years has been exceptional, and being able to apply all of this into a community that's as diverse as Troy is only going to be helpful. But all of this, getting up to speed is just like getting up to speed at any job. I feel that I have the management and leadership skills that are required for this, and I'm looking forward to taking all the international experience that I have, that's been parallel to all of it, whether I'm working with Chief of Staff of the Swedish military, or if I'm working with the council, the requirements to interoperate and to communicate clearly and effectively are the same. The other part that I would look is, I will rely heavily on the staff. For me, I'm the leader, I'm helping them with stabilization. They're the ones that really understand the day-to-day operations, and I'm learning from them, just as anybody who comes into the job will learn about the nuances of any staff, because they're never the same anywhere that you go.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Thanks, Aaron. The City of Troy offers a shuttle service in the Big Beaver Corridor. This service was intended to be partially funded, at least partially funded, by businesses in the corridor. After two years of service and many attempts to receive sponsorships, the city is fully funding the service in general fund dollars. How would you analyze a city service to determine if it is successful and sustainable?
Well, based upon what you said right there, where the measure of effectiveness is that the businesses in the community are going to be responsible for funding it, I would say it's not successful. And that would mean that we need to go back to the drawing board and find out the right way of taking a look at that. Certainly, it's a valuable service, and then are there different options that we have for this? If the city's fully funding it, can we use other people's money to do this? Is there availability for something from the state, or even federally as part of a grant process? Are there ways that we can otherwise appeal or encourage the businesses that maybe haven't been tried previously? So those would be the ways that I would at least take a look at the problem from the beginning. And then, the other challenge that we have is finding out who are the stakeholders that are using it the most. And from that demographic, is there a way of appealing back up and through as to who could possibly help us out with that? I know it's a real challenge when it comes to things like this, but having good measured performance and measures of effectiveness within a strategy really are showing whether or not we're doing the right things the right way.
One of the largest challenges for the City of Troy is funding its capital needs. Troy is unique in that we have a dedicated capital village. However, the headway pullback has reduced the village rate. The increasing demand for capital needs and the reduction in funding has caused the city to evaluate its planning process. What method would you propose to evaluate and prioritize these capital needs to select what receives funding? How would you explain to department heads and to the public if there was a need that did not receive funding?
Sure. And I think there's two sides to it. There's also the evaluation side, whether you're taking a look at health and safety, a liability or efficiency aspect of the capital needs that are there. But one thing I've found through my time of working with different nations is, are we being the most efficient at putting this together? I've used Lean Six Sigma throughout my time in the military, ability to define, measure, analyze, improve, and then control a different process. And what I've found is, we've found money that we were wasting within these different organizations in the way that we were effectively able to work forward. And I believe that if we give the different staff directorates even something as simple as green belt training, that's an opportunity for everybody to dig into their areas, and I think we'll find some significant savings in funds, so that really what you're doing is you're generating yet another means of funding things. Let me give you a couple of examples. So current Washington- So Kern, Washington, they were able to take a look at a tax form, and they redid it, and they saved more, over $120,000 a year. Fort Campbell, Kentucky, took a look at their energy savings by putting smart energy monitors in, and they had an app that went to their iPhone. They saved $217,000 a month. We took a look at Fort Worth, Texas, they took a look at how they were doing their road work and efficiencies that they had through there. They were basically going out and filling each pothole that needed to be done. Took a look at their process, redid it again, saved $748,000 in a single year with potholes. Again, with their police department, they put a police substation in so they could have greater community policing, and they took a look at their operating costs for their personnel, their maintenance, the costs that they had for their vehicles, saved $121,000. I mean, those are just a few, and you are not even touching all the different countries that are out there. So, I believe in the process, and I think this is an innovative way that we can take a look at means of saving money throughout the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Please give us an example of a time you faced an ethical dilemma, how you handled it, and what you learned from it.
When I was Chief of Operations for the 441st Air Expeditionary Advisory Squadron, I was working with the Afghan nationals, and I had a general that I was working with, and we had put together a booklet that included ethics and values. And we adopted the same core values of integrity, service, and excellence that the US Air Force had done, something I lived by every day. And I walked in one day when I was getting ready to work with him and noticed he was taking bribes. Now, this is a pretty tough situation because when you're working at that time, a lot of advisors were getting shot over things that were worse than this. But, as I walked in, he saw that I'd clearly caught him, doing something clearly unethical, stepped back out, let him do what he needed to do, what he thought he needed to do, walked back in and confronted him. He realized he'd been caught. This wasn't acceptable behavior, and the result was that we took the money away from the Kandahar Air Wing and put it back into American hands. This was a setback during the time that we were there, but the realization that we were not going to ever compromise on our ethics, especially as we were working with them in this situation. It showed him that we were serious about it, that the words mean something, and that we would always stick to this. Welcome.
Mr. Henderson?
You may air. So the City of Troy residents are a very diverse group, not only culturally, but in aging philosophy as well. There have been different demands for city services and different opinions on whether the city should be progressive or remain the same. We've seen this in a proposed civic center redevelopment, private developments with higher housing density, and infill development. What is your approach to address the generational and philosophical difference in the community while continuing to move the city forward?
The first place we start is with dialogue. And for me, whenever I see things that are like this, getting out in the community, I don't think that we can expect them to come to us, we need to go to them. Community engagement has been one of the great things that I've used throughout my time in the military and as a contractor to be able to help work this together. And here's the reason why. We get out there first and foremost to meet their key leaders, to understand their network, and to grow advocates. They understand the mission that we're trying to bring to them, understand their issues, and can bring them back as part of our work plan. And that helps us to create the right dialogue that we need with them, to maintain the dialogue that we have with them, and make sure that we're addressing it in the right manner, because this meets expectation and it also ensures that we have transparency in how we're trying to work all of this together. Generationally, the state of California took a look at five different important aspects for an aging generation, and this included safety, housing, transportation, health, and quality of life. And those are things that, as we have a working group, a group that helps with the dialogue with our aging community, certainly with our senior citizens, that are we creating the right types of services for them? We have a lot that's going on in the community center, a lot of things that they're seeing, but if we weigh against this and use that criteria, it also assists with ensuring that we're most efficient in the way that we're providing services to that demographic. And the same thing philosophically, there are a lot of diverse opinions that are out there. Having that opportunity for people to have their fair say and maintaining dialogue, I believe, is the key to being able to address this.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
The City of Troy falls under the Oakland County Emergency Operations Plan, as provided for in Public Act 390. With that fact in mind, what is your level of knowledge in emergency management, and how do you see your role as city manager in the event of a large-scale incident affecting Troy?
Well, emergency and crisis management has pretty much been my core ever since I've been here.
I was gonna say, soft-bombing.[991.12][991.12](laughter)
And that's the important thing, is defining that role. Having not read that plan, is there a defined role that's within that plan for the Troy City Manager? And if not, it needs to be in there. That way, that the county is able to help put that role together, and then if there's exercises in communications and there's equipment that we need to have that's a part of it, then we need to be involved. And certainly, my life has been around running joint operations centers and the standard operating procedures that come along with those, and leading different crises. I'm running humanitarian operations from here all the way to Madagascar, literally. So if there's things that need to work towards that, there's lots of opportunities for us to train, especially jointly, and I think one of the important things is ensuring that we're interoperable, not only amongst ourselves, but within county, state, and federal, so that we all have the right equipment for any emergency services, especially our public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Pennington?
Rex, the city has historically used a conservative approach to budgeting. This included not only a conservative approach to revenue recognition, but also budgeting for full staffing throughout the year without attrition, using illustrative rates for healthcare, even though the city is self-funded. Any surplus at the end of the fiscal year would typically be appropriated for one-time use in a future budget such as a capital improvement. Tell us how your approach to budgeting may be different.
When it comes to fund balances, it's certainly the difference between our net and our liabilities. And as we look at that specifically on how we use it, that's a policy decision that you're giving me. And certainly, we'll give advice that comes from the staff and works forward, but we always wanna continue to protect the bond rating, ensure that we have the correct reserves that are down there, and ensuring that we're able to maintain enough so that we can face any sort of crisis, whether that's going to be a pop-up disaster, or it's gonna be a fiscal downturn. And I know that within the budget, that there's a variety of things that Tom Darling's put together to help to keep us very conservative in how we use those. The recommendations that would come from the staff really are gonna be reflective of what you're giving us as part of the council.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you. Rex, you've met with employees today, there's a good contingent of them here representing at this meeting, you've met with the public, you're meeting with us. Can you please describe your plan in as much detail as possible for your first 90 days as city manager?
Sure. First and foremost, I wanna meet everybody. Everybody from the city staff to the community, really let them get to know me, me to get to know them, to align myself with the city staff, and getting out there so that they show me via windshield tour, which is a technique I've always used in the military, to show me the trouble spots in the city, show me the issues, show me what's been good, show me what's been bad, so that I really have a good feel for that. But then, it's getting out and working hard with both the city staff and then also with the city council as we execute or continue to execute the work plan that we have for the year. And then, working with the city council so we take a look at priorities, priorities that come from both strategy and from the master plan. Bring that down, start to put together a draft for the next few years, and take it out to the city. Have them take a look at it. Are we meeting expectation? Are we communicating with them? And getting out into the neighborhoods. Are we seeing what's happening in the neighborhoods or in the divisions that we have out there, or developments I should say? And are we bringing that into our work plan because that's what our constituency wants from us? Likewise, continue to grow the relationship. For me, it's being sincere and compassionate and having a happy and healthy environment. While that may seem strange to say the word happy, but what I'm looking for is being able to actually grow the morale of the team so that they feel that they can share their ideas, that they have a safe haven, whether it's just my real dope open-door policy, or meeting me for a cup of coffee, that they can express their ideas so that we can incorporate them, because these guys have great ideas. And being able to take them from a time where they were suppressed and now be able to express them in the right ways. And then on top of that, for me, green space has always been an incredibly important thing, working with the Green Space Subcommittee, putting together innovative ideas and potential solutions, balancing the way that we develop and develop properly with the community vision, where we're balancing green space and those divisions themselves. Continuing to work with our plan that we have within the master plan. Specifically, we know that we've got great roads, we've got great public safety, and we have great public works, but one of the things that people who are coming to Troy are really looking for are the ability to have non-motorized roads. Do we have the pathways? Do we have the sidewalks? Do we have that connecting of nodes that's together? And how are we moving forward with that? Do we have affordable housing that is not only for the neighborhoods and getting into $400,000 houses, but where are the affordable houses for the new families that we wanna attract as part of our businesses? And it's working with the staff to understand where those realities are. And, at the end of all of this, making sure that we have engagement with the community, so they see who the new city manager is, the city team, getting them out there, and doing those initial engagements to start that opportunity to grow those relationships.
Councilwoman Abraham?
How would you prioritize the following expenditures from preparing the budget, given limited funding? First item is adding a new program or service based on requests of a specific group of residents. Two, increasing the funding of an underfunded pension or retiree healthcare program. And three, funding capital infrastructure or building renovations that have exhausted their useful life.
And when you say exhausted and useful life, meaning that there's no way of renovating this?
I'll say functionally obsolete.
Okay. For me, it's ensuring that we're funding the pension first and foremost. Taking care of the people that have workforce and keeping our promises to ensure that their pension is covered is, to me, most important. Then to the programs themselves, but we need to understand that that program's gonna be sustainable for the long term. Because it's most, if we're starting something new, we wanna make sure that we have the funding source that's going to sustain that and maintain that long-term investment. And then, with the capital infrastructure, one of the questions I'd ask is, was that part of the capital improvement plan? Did it have a factor that was with it? Is there a plan to replacement as part of sustainment, or is this just a pop-up?
That was what the assessment was to do, it was...
To get rid of it?
To understand where facilities are at, what their needs are, how that factors into budgeting.
Okay. So, just simply, one, two, three, fund, program, capital, improve that broken building, but that'd probably be a way of being able to reutilize it as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna jump to Councilwoman Hoderick.
Thank you, mayor. Please describe the process you would utilize to recruit and select talented senior staff. Also, there could be several retirements over the next several years in key management positions. How will you lead the organization to have clear succession plans? What must leadership consider when making succession plans?
I think we start from the bottom and work our way back up. So when dealing with a succession plan, and what do we need to consider is, number one, what are we looking at at rotations? Who is it? When is it? What skills do they have? Have they built a bench? Are there people that can float up, that are prepared to go do that? And how do you move forward in that case? What skills specifically do you have as part of that job description? Is it attitude and knowledge only, or there's specific skills that have to go with this? Certainly, if we're talking about a chief of police or a fire chief, there are certifications that are absolute musts that go with this, and others that may be softer. It may be nice to have a masters of this or a masters of that, but whether we actually need to have that is a discussion that we need to have, both with the department and understanding if we're looking at equity goals as well. And then, as we look at key management, certainly taking the department into consideration, who's gonna be a good fit for their team? The last thing I'm gonna do is bring somebody in that doesn't meld well, that doesn't work well with others, that is going to be able to work hard with that team and help to keep them on the right path and to let them grow and continue to do great work. And then, as we talk about how we recruit them specifically, we have to be hand-in-hand with HR. And the work that Jeanette Minnick does and the work that each department lead would be doing is critical to finding the right person. And then the process that we can use, especially if we're looking at having a diverse community, we have a variety of pots of people that we can use that are local, especially if you're looking for somebody that's closer to home. We have so many different businesses, we have so many different education facilities, we have different areas that we can draw talented people from, veterans, that would be able to help out with all of these different things. But as we recruit, it's critical that we find those elements, especially character elements that we wanna recruit against.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Pennington?
Actually, as a third question, I actually like Councilman Hamilton's question better than mine as a third question, is that required?[1756.46][1756.46](laughter) Rather, you, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, time will get to mine, but I'd like yours to be better.[1761.46][1761.46](laughter)
Okay. Please give an example of an idea that you implemented to increase revenues, and an example of an idea that you implemented to decrease annual operating expenditures. How did that idea work? What did you learn? And of course, apply it to your statement.
Okay. So, increase revenue and decrease expenditures, correct? Okay. All right. Working as the Chief of Defense Institution Building at Special Operations Command Europe... Working as the chief of defense institution building at Special Operations Command Europe, I volunteered to lead a board where we went through and we revamped an entire, let's call it a grant, process. We have a security cooperation form of money that's out there. It's Title 22, Title 10, that's part of the US government. And part of this is what we call, we had four different types of funding that came together, but they were very difficult to work with. People couldn't find the right type of operation to apply that money, so it stayed in a fund and wasn't used. It was very difficult to get to apply it. So I volunteered to lead the group so that we could revamp this entire type of money. And it's now called 333 money. That's part of train, equip monies that come out for worldwide operations. What this did is it gave Special Operations Command Europe more than $100 million to head out and to do the defense institution building as well as train, advise, and equip so that we could get our allies onto the battle space rather than having Americans have to do all of this. Likewise, the other day, I had one of my commanders come up and was telling me that because of sequestration and budget cuts that he didn't have the ability to send his troops back to the United States for training. And I asked him, well, why do you need to send them back to the United States? It's not like the Brits aren't able to do the training in their backyard. And so he said, well, we don't have the priority to get this done. So I was able to engage with the Ministry of Defense to get a higher priority for training for our personnel. And instead of spending $1.2 million of sending guys back to the States, we spent about $10,000 and have a permanent way of being able to train our personnel. And that's been a huge savings as well as being able to put that money towards other combat operations. Thank you. You're welcome.
Counselor Pennington.
Troy Fire Department is unique in that it's the largest combination-style fire department in the state of Michigan and largest municipal fire department in Oakland County comprised primarily of volunteer firefighters operating at one-half to one-third the cost of a full-time career fire department of comparable size. With that fact in mind, do you see value in continuing with this model of service in a large suburban community like Troy? And if so, how do you propose to support the concerns and needs of the fire department, in particular, its volunteer members?
I think that the work at the Troy Fire Department is fantastic. I talked a little bit about that earlier when we talked about ISO reading and certainly the support that being able to provide public safety in general is extremely important from the work that I've done in the military, downrange, and certainly back at home. But we also know that I think this is a very good model because you're giving them the best training, the best equipment that you can afford so that they are working extremely well. I would not change anything that came along with that.
Counselor Henderson.
So please describe a situation when you disagreed with your higher-ups and directors that they've given you and how do you approach that difference of opinion and explain the final result of the situation?
I gave part of this example during my initial interview where we talked about the fact that we'd opened up a base, created this 4,300-person military organization, really a city, and then we're being told that we need to close the base. What we did is we came together as a staff, let it, so that we said, okay, this doesn't make sense to us as that we're closing this base because of the strategic value that it had. So we gathered data, PowerPoints, strategic reasons, put this in a large package, flew down to Tampa, Florida and presented this in front of Special Operations Command and said, hey, we understand that you have the idea of closing the base. We don't think this is the right idea. Here's the reasons for it. Very eloquent, well-presented, but no, we're still going to close the base. And so we realized that even though that we'd had our day in the sun to talk about this, we were given the policy from the policymakers that this is where we need to go. You have to march forward with this. So we had to go back to the UK and address this with everybody that worked so hard at trying to support us in this manner of putting this entire package together to try to save the base. And the lesson for this is, you can provide all the data that you want to, but once the decision's been made, then we get behind the policy. And it's important to align the staff, align the personnel, align the troops, everybody behind the policy so that everybody's running in the right direction. There can't be hangouts, people that still want to go against it. That kind of toxic followership doesn't work and all it does is hurt the organization. And when those things come ahead, we all have to march in the right direction.
Rex, I'm going to ask the last question. Based on the research of your understanding of the city, how are you specifically the best candidate for the city manager position?
Okay. I know you have other qualified candidates, but I'm your strongest candidate. I'm coming from outside of Michigan with a fresh set of eyes and an international perspective. I've been at Forefront Global Operations for more than 20 years, working for more than 30 different nations. And what I've been doing is I've been managing their development to help make them stronger. In the same way, I'm able to take all of this knowledge and make a city stronger, to work with the staff to help them. I'm an expert in strategy, being able to take policy, developing it into strategy, and executing that with the help of the staff and putting it all together so that we can move in the same direction and meet the goals that are set out in the master plan. I've been, I build strong, resilient, and professional teams that can achieve anything. And when I say resilient, this means that, it's a military term, that means that you don't have to be at work 20 hours a day. You have a right balance between home life and work life. You ensure that during times of surge, you are able to do that, but at the same time, we're trained, we're working together, and we ensure that we meet the needs of the city and needs of the mission. I've been chief of Special Operations. I've been the first in to work with diverse communities, many times hostile, sometimes shooting at me, but I've made sure that I've set the foundations of trust in the end and I can do that in any area of the city. And on top of that, I'm an excellent communicator. Everything from working standard operating procedures to white papers for DOT MIL PFI that are now used as standard throughout the Department of Defense and many of our allies, all the way up to their executive offices. I know that these are all things that will work strongly in my favor of working within the city, and I realize that helps me to be one of the best candidates that's out there.
Thank you, Rex. Well done. Thank you. We're going to take a break for a couple minutes and then we'll be back with our third candidate. Thank you, Rex.
With Victor Cardenas. Victor is our third candidate for the interview this evening. Victor, just a couple of points before we get going. It's going to be very similar to last interview. Each council member will ask a question, will rotate around the table, and then keep going until the hour is up. And so, having said that, each question will be the exact or very similar to the other questions that were asked. There might be a slight different theme based on each candidate, but the questions will all have been the same.
Great.
So, having said that, I'm going to start with the first question.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Victor, how would you describe your management and leadership style? Please identify strengths and weaknesses related to both your management and your leadership approach, and identify how you hold direct reports accountable for projects and/or issues that you've been, that you've delegated to them.
All right. Hopefully, I can keep track of all that. So, we and I have been subscribed to this practice of leadership at all levels so that everyone in the organization can exercise leadership to get things done and to be able to make decisions accordingly. So, it's really that collaborative style, the collaborative spirit that I try to foster and try to encourage throughout the organization. In terms of keeping it on base or in touch with everyone, utilizing technology to stay abreast of what's going on, in terms of just reminders, having touchpoints with our, with staff, direct reports and other reports frequently, they can follow up on what's going on, make sure, keep track of what those tasks are, what those responsibilities are, what we've talked about, we talked about in the past, so that we can make sure that, because I always find that sometimes when people, you're meeting with your staff, and they talk about what's going on, and then they might not bring that up next time, so, because they think that you might not remember, but always got to make sure that you just keep it top of mind that, that what they, that they thought was important, or that make sure it doesn't fall off the, fall off the radar at all, because city council usually has some goals or some questions that are out there. Residents might have the same kind of questions out there, and sometimes those questions might be harder to answer, so, or we will do address. So, they might put it aside, and we always got to make sure to bring it back to the top to be able to resolve it. So, it's really an open door, open door policy, collaborative efforts, and making sure that we empower individuals to be able to, to be able to make those decisions in the field or anywhere when they're, when they need to make a tough decision. In terms of shortcomings, weaknesses, similar to a coach, I think I can always work on communication style, communication delivery, because if you use the same style over and over again, and I feel like you're like in an athletic atmosphere or realm, the team's going to, you know, it's going to be white noise to them. So, you've got to come up with different delivery methods to keep them engaged, to keep them interested, and keep them on their toes, so that they're, they're invigorated and they're ready to go, and, and know it's, know it's coming. So, again, but at the same time, they don't want to be white noise, the same old message coming through over and over again. As they say in the sports world, going through the motions, but you've got to be able to tune that up a little bit, make it more, make it lively, so everyone stays and stays interested. So, and I think in the city world, I think many of us that are in this room that are city employees, I think no one day is the same, it's always something different, always a new challenge coming up, coming up, so I don't think it's that hard, but in terms of delivering the message, it could always be something different. Did I hit all of those questions?
You got it. Mayor Proten, Victor will ask the next question.
Hey, Victor, good to see you again. Currently, the Troy Public Library operates on a dedicated millage. The current funding was designed to keep the library open six days per week, but there is demand for the library to be open seven days a week. Some believe that the library should be funded by general fund dollars. How will you address this concern when the millage expires in 2020, and how will you propose to fund a seven-day library? How would factors like the rising minimum wage and operating costs affect your plan?
Well, I mean, take a look at what the funding is, what the, in terms of dedicated millage, how much that produces every year, how much that satisfies the expenses that the library has. And I know for the library landscape nowadays, most library employees are part-time. I'm not sure if that's the case in Troy as well, and also the case of other communities. I'm able to sit down in a library network, it's a consortium of libraries. It's, it's a weird kind of a map of where they serve, but it's all over the place, and I know the majority of those employees are part-time employees. And I know there's a great demand for Sunday, Sunday service. So, in terms of looking at the millage, how much that produces, is there any cost savings that can be realized in the current operations of the library? And then be able to meet with or discuss with council and staff in terms of what priorities are, if there's appetite for, you know, heavily override, if that's been the case over the years, or to utilize general fund dollars if that's an option as well, if there's an appetite for that as well. But it's, and then also look at there's any partnerships that can be made. There's always, again, partnerships not going to help in terms of funding, in terms of keeping it up Sunday, but is there opportunities where other avenues can be explored? I've always thought, found it interesting that we have all these high schools, we have all these elementary schools with all these library facilities, and they're only open certain hours of the day. Again, that's two different populations you're serving, but they're still meeting the same, same needs. So, look outside the box, see if there are any kind of ways of doing it, but if there's only a certain pocket of money that you can utilize out of the millage or the general funding, you're constrained to that. But, again, it's fund balance an option as well at any point to allocate that, but you're looking for sustainable funds, sustainable dollar amount to be able to keep that service open for, for ongoing basis. Obviously, you've got holidays and whatnot, but looking for 52 years out of that, 52 weeks out of the year, 52 more open days, most likely.
Councilman Abraham will ask the next question.
Good to see you again.
You too.
There are times when a governing body is divided. Please describe how you've dealt with this type of situation in the past. How were you able to keep operations running effectively and efficiently?
As long as the body realizes the common goal in terms of serving citizens and making sure that operations is, is maintained. I don't think there's ever a case when the, there's complete uniformity in the, or complete agreement with the body, no matter what entity that may be. I mean, it's any corporate board, or volunteer, or nonprofit board. So, making sure that common ground can be, can be found, it can be identified, and maybe act as facilitator in terms of communicating, and the pros and cons to the different position that might be dividing them, if it is a certain issue or, or policy decision that's, that's causing the rift. But it's really just trying to stay neutral, and actually not stay, just be neutral, but give the information as much as possible to either side, and be able to find that common ground and bring them together. But again, the common ground is the community in terms of the services to the residents and delivering as best as possible. Obviously, there's different styles and attitudes of how that can be delivered, and that's where the, I guess, the rift and the disagreement might come into play. But at the end of the day, the budget kind of sells that all out, and what would hopefully bring the entity together.
Councilman Hamilton will ask the next question.
So, the city of Troy recently appointed a group of residents to define open and green space, analyze our current inventory, compare the city of Troy to other surrounding cities, and make recommendations. How would you handle a recommendation for a dedicated millage, or to devote other funding to maintain, enhance, and expand the city of Troy's green space?
It's definitely an issue that I think all cities are grappling with right now, to preserve the open space. I mean, just, it'd be interested, learning more about the manner in which they came to their conclusions, and I would hope that they would take into consideration those funding models of maintaining whatever their goals are. Again, it's, the councils is the ones that are going to be, you would be the one that would be entertaining that millage consideration, either a new millage or dedicated millage just for that, or for other activities that would maybe, that would be fallen under that category. But again, it's looking at, looking at the landscape, seeing if there's other opportunities available, partnering, partnering with other entities, nonprofit groups that might be tailored toward that, Sierra groups that might have funds. But again, you're looking probably not just for acquisition of those, preservation of that, but maintaining them and sustaining them over the times, which that's where you're going to get those larger costs, if you will. So, just hearing them out and talking through that, and talking with council in terms of what the goals and those are aligned with one another. But that's something that our council has been very eager at in terms of preserving open space and acquiring properties. But at, one thing that has to be known, and hopefully the committee understands, is that if you, if you acquire that through city funds, that takes that, those off that tax, tax roll. So, in the essence, you're kind of double, double hurting yourself. But it still reaches their goal to preserve the open space, that's what they're looking for. So, there's no real silver bullet to that answer, but it's just really those discussions and having that open dialogue to figure out how to achieve those goals.
Councilman Henderson will ask the next question.
The city of Troy has recently completed a facility condition assessment on its 52 buildings. The comprehensive assessment has identified over $20 million of deficiencies to be addressed within the next five years. What has been your experience with an aging building infrastructure, and what are some of your ideas for funding?
Sense a little theme if you're in terms of funding, in terms of different activities and priorities. We had something similar as well in City Novi, we were able to identify, we actually had an assessment as well, identified a large dollar amount of repairs that need to be made, expansions, and renovations. Ultimately, we, it was decided by city council, by recommendation of staff for capital improvement millage, I believe it's one mill over 20 years, to not only help pay for or expand different facilities for the city facilities, but also large ticket items, as in fire trucks, police needs, or other large ticket items that might be falling under terms of preservation as well. So, again, that's only a small pocket of money that over a dedicated period of time, you get back into sustainability and be able to finance that going forward as well. But unfortunately, that's the only way of doing it in terms, that I've been able to identify. Obviously, you can look at other avenues, but you need that, that sustainable revenue stream to be able to maintain those buildings going forward. So, I feel that's one of the drawbacks of how we fund K through 12 education here is that we, that state law that you have to bond everything, and you get one pocket of money and bond issue, and then they, they can build something, but then let, have to essentially let it break before you can go for another bond again and repair it again, or build anew. So, it's, it's something that all of us municipalities are going to, and all government entities are going to have to struggle with in terms of maintaining that, those, these structures that we have, fire stations, park facilities, city halls, to be able to keep them viable. And plus, it's just not only just the maintenance of it, it's also to look, make them look attractive for the new work floors. So, we've done a lot of work in our facilities to make it attractive, and to bring down any kind of cube farms, to have that new work environment for the new age of employees to cater what they're looking for.
Councilwoman Hodorick will ask the next question.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Troy has an exceptional bond rating, AAA, and an outstanding Class III ISO rating. What is your experience and knowledge of these types of ratings, and how do you propose to maintain them here in Troy?
Fortunately, we just got an upgraded ISO, ISO rating, five in Novi, so we're being able to celebrate that on our social media and whatnot. And AAA bond rating, it'll let you, bless you. Allows you to bond, bond easier, and have, if the council decides to bond for any types of issues, so it makes that process a lot easier. Ironically, just through my affiliation with Grand Lakes University, we just got a good news from our bond sale that we just had that was significantly better than we thought, almost 25% better than we thought, that they planned for, for all the different needs that we have for the 2D buildings we're building. So, it's, it's, that AAA bond rating gives us so much leeway in terms of flexibility, in terms of looking at financing things down the road, and it provides that confidence to those possible bond purchasers for making those improvements. And ISO helps insurance rates for the, for the residents and for the businesses. You know, there are some schools, schools of thought of how important the ISO is or not, so, either way, a very good rating will get you, will have some kind of movement in your insurance rates. And it's something you can celebrate as well, because it verifies that you have a safe community, and you have the fire, public safety responses that will be able to maintain that safe quality of life.
Thank you.
Councilman Pennington will ask the next question.
Victor, approximately two-thirds of the city full-time staff is unionized. In June 2019, Troy will have two collective bargaining agreements expiring, police command officers and fire staff officers. Tell us about your collective bargaining experience, including your experience with interest-based bargaining. Also, explain how you have dealt with any previous impasse in negotiation.
It would appear, it seems like we're in negotiations every year. We have, we have six bargaining units in my current location. I've been involved in bargaining teams in another community that I've been a part of. And it's just trying to have that collaborative work, relationship with those entities to be able to make sure it's, it's professional, and it's respectful in bargaining in terms of its, its interest, to the issues itself. So, we've, I believe my time in Novi, we went through all of our contracts at least once, maybe twice. Haven't been at impasse yet in terms of 312 arbitration, but there's a couple times we've gotten almost to the, we've gotten to the end of the cliff, hopefully. We're in, we're in mediation right now with one of our groups, hopefully we're not going to go to 312 arbitration, but if that's the case, it is what it is. Obviously, it's, we don't try to do that, we try to stay clear as much as possible, but if, I believe in our, we bargain in the best interest, but you never know if they're going to do the same. And it's not a cheap endeavor, but it's, that's why the law is there, to help you through that process. Either side never really wants to go there, because they never know what they're going to end up with, but it's something that hopefully you have the good relationship beforehand, that you don't, not bargaining on work, work conditions, or, or making sure that they have the right facility, the right facilities or the right equipment, you're more bargaining on just the benefits and possibly some other policies in the, in the organization. But I felt like we've had a good rapport with our groups, and we have, like I said, six, I believe it's just six, it might be more, but we've had a good rapport and be able to get through, through all of these without any kind of 312 arbitration to date.
I'll ask the next question.
What do you believe will be the biggest challenge of transitioning from your role as an assistant city manager to the Troy city manager position? How do you plan to address that challenge?
Thankfully, I've already served in the big chair, either as interim in Novi, or as a village manager in a smaller community. But it's really, no matter what, I've came here as an assistant or as a, as a manager, it's really to get to know the employees. I think I touched on this last interview, is to be able to gain the trust with you, city council, meeting with you individually, determining how you like to be communicated with, and be able to engage in that communication, and just to meet with the, all the department directors, and then the staff in their locations, and have as many open forums as possible, and dine with them as much as possible to get to know them, and for them to get to know me. And again, just to build that, that trust, and to start establishing those relationships with those, each of those entities, the staff and the, and the city council. And obviously, the citizens are in there somewhere as well, and be able to engage them at some point as well, to build their trust and get to know them as well.
Thank you. Mayor Proten, Baker?
Thank you. The city of Troy offers a shuttle service on the Big Beaver Corridor. This service was intended to be at least partially funded by businesses in the corridor itself. After two years of service and many attempts to receive sponsorships, the city is slowly funding the service through general fund dollars. How would you analyze the city service to determine if it is successful and sustainable?
I mentioned it earlier, one of my remarks in terms of use of data, and we have been in, in communication with SMART as well, in terms of, we're currently an opt-out community, and we're looking at exploring options of opting in. And part of that is to, to gauge and to, and to track ridership. And I'm not sure if there's, I haven't been able to identify there's a community survey, but that might be an option in the future as well, in terms of determining how important that shuttle is and what the use of that is, but really, it's in terms of usage, and if the, and not only just with the residents in terms of possible riders, but also with those businesses, if they feel it's important as well that that shuttle's available. Maybe it's not 365, 52 weeks a year, maybe it's just during the holidays, maybe it's a certain busy times that we can identify that make that in, in play, but if it's not used on certain parts of the day, and scaling that, that service back. But it's looking at all options that are on the table, and making sure you interact with the different populations that use it or rely on it.
Councilman Abraham?
So, one of the largest challenges for the city of Troy is funding its capital needs. Troy is unique in that we have a dedicated capital millage. However, the heavily rollback has reduced the military. The increase in demand for capital needs and the reduction of funding is causing the city to evaluate its planning process. What method would you propose to evaluate and prioritize these capital needs to select what receives funding? How would you explain to department heads and to the public if there was a need that did not receive funding?
Again, we're back to the funding. Yes. So, I mean, even in a fiscally sound community like Troy, there's always going to be needs. We've already mentioned the 52 buildings that are, that need some kind of work as well. There's always going to be apparatus from the fire department that need to be replaced, police cars that need to be replaced. So, it's, with the training that I've gotten is to be able to have those departments prioritize their needs as much as possible, both capital, we split things up in terms of service delivery, and then capital as well, but all, regardless, that comes with the populations that use it or rely on it.
Councilwoman Abraham?
So, one of the largest challenges for the City of Troy is funding its capital needs. Troy is unique in that we have a dedicated capital village. However, the headway rollback has reduced the military. The increase in demand for capital needs and the reduction of funding is causing the city to evaluate its planning process. What method would you propose to evaluate and prioritize these capital needs to select what receives funding? How would you explain to department heads and to the public if there was a need that did not receive funding?
Again, we're back to the funding.
Theme.
Yes. So, I mean, even in a fiscally sound community like Troy, there's always gonna be needs. We've already mentioned the 52 buildings that are, that need some kind of work as well. There's always gonna be apparati from the fire department that need to be replaced, police cars that need to be replaced. So, it's, the training that I've gotten is to be able to have those departments prioritize their needs as much as possible, both capital. We split things up in terms of service delivery and then capital as well, but regardless, that comes in the same pot of money most times, but I'm sure the capital villages is for capital purchases of over $25,000. So, it's just be able to prioritize as much as possible and be able to communicate that with those department directors and council in terms of how we came to that decision. Ultimately, council is the ultimate decider in that, and they may overrule or change that decision, but I believe everyone and our department directors know the funding constraints that we all operate in and that it's not growing on trees, unfortunately, as much as I look for them in the forest. It's a broken model, and it's something that us, as communities, have worked together in terms of relating that message to our elected officials and trying to identifying new sources of revenue, restoring statutory revenue sharing to what it used to be back in the 80s, 90s, all the time when I wasn't in the profession. I feel like it was good times, so I'm missing out on that. But again, it's just, it's a small pocket of money, but hopefully, as a team, as a city staff team, they'll understand how we arrived on that decision. But again, it wouldn't be just me arriving on that, it would be hopefully all of us.
Councilman Hamilton?
Please give an example of a time you faced an ethical dilemma, how you handled it, and what you learned from it.
I think there's been instances when we've had, I think specifically, we had an employee that was a department director that was hired not too long and then had some other hirings after they got installed in their position, and then immediately wanted to get rid of some of the employees that they just hired. And there was no due process, there was no performance improvement plan, and it was a tough call to, that individual put us in a position to say either you get rid of these people or I'm gonna go. And it wasn't really an ethical decision in terms of, you know, were they doing wrong or are there any kind of laws or illegal activity was going on, but it was just a, we didn't allow individuals to have their say or be able to perform well, and this individual was asking us to get rid of them already, like a matter of months. So, unfortunately, we had to side with the employees that were hired, that this individual wanted us to hire, and the individual stepped away from our organization. So, again, it wasn't anything unethical, but it was a moral dilemma we had in terms of being respectful to those individuals that we just brought into our organization, onboarded them, and, but weren't being, given the chance to try to grow them or put them on a performance improvement plan if that was the case from their supervisor, which was a department director. So, trying to balance those needs, but in the end, they painted us into a corner and we went with the employees that, again, that was brought on from their guidance and what they wanted, and we had to support them accordingly. It wasn't an easy decision, but it was what needed to be done.
Councilman Hamilton?
The City of Troy's residents are a very diverse group, not just culturally, but age and philosophy. There have been different demands for city services and different opinions on whether the city should be progressive or remain the same. We've seen this in the proposed civic center redevelopment, private developments with higher housing density, and infill development. What is your approach to address the generational and philosophical differences in a community while continuing to move the city forward?
Yeah, that's a tough one. It's, and again, it's not exclusive to Troy. I think it's prevalent across the country and across Michigan. I believe the, I'm a strong proponent that the NIMBYism, the not-in-my-backyard mentality is alive and well, and I hear it all the time and hear it from colleagues. And it's just, you know, I hate to keep on harping back at communication, but it's just to be able to communicate and receive communication from those individuals and try to manage their expectations and what their interests are, and be able to respond and propose to council accordingly what we believe is the best course of action. In the end, I think you kind of covered it, that there's different philosophies, there's different schools of thought, different ages, and in the end, someone's not gonna be happy about it. But hopefully, there's been an informed decision and there's enough research and enough data to support the decisions being proposed to city council so they can make an informed decision. But it's, you know, at the same time, we can't, I would not encourage Troy to be something that's not, and saying like, this is this new way that's, it's working fantastic in Seattle, it's gonna work right here. Well, Troy's not Seattle, so it's gotta find a solution to some of these issues that works best for Troy and its residents. And there's, we live in a very small metropolitan area that some of these needs might be met by some of our colleague or neighboring communities, but to try to make it work here and that's as much as possible.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holterich?
Thank you. The City of Troy falls under the Oakland County Emergency Operations Plan as provided for in Public Act 390. With that in mind, what is your level of knowledge in emergency management? How do you see your role as city manager in the event of a large-scale incident affecting Troy?
I really just call the police chief up and say, hey, what do I do? I had the opportunity to actually go to a, what was it, a mass destruction course way back early in my career and learned all about the federal guidelines for emergency management, been able to work with the Oakland County folks. Fortunately, fortunately, I was able to actually live it when we had an emergency in our community that was de-hilating and didn't have water for 24 hours. So, I've had experience in that, been able to understand that the steps you need to go through, the resources you need, and it's just not as, I mean, yeah, the city manager is one piece of the puzzle, informing council what's going on and also just making sure that the staff has the resources by whoever's determined as the director of the ELSI or who is the dedicated manager of the incident. That name's escaping right now, but making sure that they have what they need. It's either as dedicated as in the plan as a city manager or as a police chief, a fire chief, whoever is dedicated to that or simply that in the plan. But it's an all-hands-on-deck scenario where you have finance tracking expenses, you have HR, making sure the staff has what they have, community relations, in terms of getting that message out to the public and to businesses. So, it's something that I've been a part of and unfortunately, fortunately, had to deal with.
Thank you.
Councilman Pennington?
Victor, the city has historically used a conservative approach to budgeting. This included not only a conservative approach to revenue recognition, but also budgeting for full staff throughout the year without attrition, using illustrative rates for healthcare even though the city is self-funded. Any surplus at the end of the fiscal year would typically be appropriated for a one-time use in a future budget such as a capital improvement. Tell us how your approach to budgeting may be different.
It's similar, and again, we've kind of touched on that several different times in terms of the pot of money, but it's, again, it's, our budget process, much like yours, is July through June. We start the next year's budget process unfortunately in August. A painstaking thought that we'd just enacted a new budget and have to start it again. So, we're currently in the midst of our budget meetings. And again, it's meeting with the departments, determining what they need, what those priorities are, listing those priorities, hearing out what their goals are and what their aspirations are, and then understanding the goals of city council. If those one-time needs is capital expenditures, that's fantastic. Is that, if that's a, any surplus at the end of the year goes toward unfiling liabilities, that's another, that's another option as well. So, making sure that all those options are on the table. But it's, I like to have as much information as possible, like the council has enough information as possible, and likewise, like the public to know as much as possible as well. So, they know where their money's going and how those decisions were made. So, I was a big driver for our capital improvement plan, to be digitized and it's online, has a lot of information on there, it's interactive, people know, and not only our residents use it a lot, but our employees use it a lot just to know where things are progressing, where they, what year they're being funded in, and where included they are. It's map-based, it's finance-based, it's fund-based, it's year-based as well. So, it can be dynamic in that kind of way. And then you have your run-of-the-mill, year-to-year activities, expenses that need to be funded as well, but it's just drilling down into the weeds on an annual basis and seeing what needs to be funded, what can we stop doing, what could we possibly switch in a different direction. But again, we keep on going back to the same thing in terms of dollars and cents and limited pots of money, so it's something that's never gonna go away.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you. Having met with some city employees today, members of the public, I mean, with us, can you please describe your plan in as much detail as possible for your first 90 days as city manager?
Day one, find the office. Really, it's just gonna be concentrating on staff first, on department directors, council, and just getting a schedule of what, seeing the city through their eyes, being able to maybe take some different drives with them, seeing what their priorities are, what they're, what they're looking at. And that's just department directors, again, and I kind of alluded to it earlier, meeting with staff, having open houses in their respective workplaces, those 52 buildings, and getting to meet them, getting to know them. Again, but still staying engaged with city council and understanding what their, what your aspirations are, what your goals are, what your interests are. So, meeting with you possibly individually as you see fit, and going to many as community events as possible to get to know the community and get out there and see what's going on in the community and what the community is looking for as well. So, that would, I mean, probably take up, it's just, it's not gonna be, you know, meet with those individuals and be done, it's gonna be ongoing. I'd most likely be taking some ride-alongs with the police department, maybe spending some time in the fire department after hours or during weekends when it's busy, just trying to experience the city as much as possible through their eyes and so I get an idea of what's going on as well and get a good perspective of how things are running.
Councilwoman Abraham?
All right, we're gonna get back to the budget again.
Yay!
All right. So, how would you prioritize the following expenditures while preparing the budget, given limited funding? One, adding a new program or service based on the request of a specific program or resident. Two, increasing the funding of an underfunded pension or retiree healthcare program. Or three, funding capital infrastructure or building renovations that have exhausted their useful life.
Well, that's easy. It really, again, it's a complex question in terms of how to be able to, you know, quickly look at what I would prioritize it, but it would most likely be if it's limited resources and it would probably be the capital in terms of how we, whatever that might be, interests. It's tied to some kind of delivery of service or quality of life for our residents, be it roads, water sewer, infrastructure, traffic infrastructure, something like that. And then depending on what the long-term liability is, that would probably be number two, just because of different state statutes are in place in terms of what we are beholden to, in terms of notifying them to fall under a certain funding level. Obviously, you're fantastically funded here in terms of pension liability, but maybe for OPEB, that might trigger some kind of report from the state, so depending on what that level will bring us back up to. And then that new program would be number three in my list. Again, just knowing this on the face in terms of not knowing the whole story of that, but that's how that would, that's how I treat a lot of those things in our current position in terms of capital needs, and then pension needs and OPEB and liability needs, and then a new program after that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton?
Please give an example of an idea that you implemented to increase revenues and an example of an idea that you implemented to decrease annual operating expenditures. How did the idea work and what did you learn?
The first one was in the Village of Brooklyn. Right when I was leaving, we were able to take on some responsibilities in terms of maintaining the area-wide sewer system. And that was able to us to have more revenue coming into the, to our organization, to be able to provide more staff to provide better service to our residents, but also better service to the area residents from townships and wherever else was serviced by this area-wide sewer system and treatment system. So, that was something that when I was on my way out, we were able to get more capital needs in there in terms of newer vehicles to help us not only do the job of maintaining the city, the villages, infrastructure, but also help out on a regional line as well. In terms of decreasing, or in terms of evaluating and removing or deleting out expenses, it's something that we borrowed from someplace near and dear to your heart, Fordmore Company in terms of a stop list. I'm not sure if it was Alan Malali who brought it up, but in terms of, we had a stop list, tried to enact a couple of years in terms of what do we need to stop doing, what is not adding value anymore, is that a process, is that a program, is that, if need be, a position that's not adding value anymore. Very rarely are our positions, it's mainly a process that is logging down people in our organization. That's what we're looking at in terms of reports that we're being asked of, or programs that might not be getting enough traction or attendance. That's what we enacted one year to be able to reduce those expenses here and there. Again, I don't have a huge dollar amount that we were able to realize, but it was something that definitely people were, especially our employees, were like, oh, I need to stop doing this. But they had to prove what, why they need to stop doing it, and there was no value being added to the organization or the city.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I'm sure you've never disagreed with the city council before, but describe a situation when you've disagreed with the city council. How did you approach the difference of opinion and explain the final result of the situation?
I'm trying to remember back when I was a village manager, when we had a, an issue with the, our, again, it's a small village, only a certain number of retirees, and the council all knew those retirees by name or probably lived next door to them. And those retirees, every other year may have gotten a cost of living increase. So, that means that they would, their pension was set, but then they would get a cost of living increase on top of that. If, and we had to evaluate if that would, how much that would put a burden on the village's small budget and be able to articulate that to our village council at the time in terms of how that would affect it and what that would do and what that means in terms of compounding for future years, and then if you stopped it in another year, then started again, how that would affect the funding level of that as well. It was not an easy decision, it was a very long meeting. We were able to bring in assets from the Michigan MERS to come in and help explain it, and in terms of providing our recommendations. And again, it's something that I, you know, I might disagree with the decision, but at the end of the day, it's the council who's elected by the individuals, and it's, all we do as staff is put forth our recommendation and then let the legislative process take its place. So, it's nothing that I need to ever, you know, be vested in or be emotional about because it's business, being able to present the pros and cons to whatever decision that is and let council make the decision. So, I'm trying to remember how that was rectified the other day, and I was actually looking up old minutes to see how that was, kind of the questions were gonna come up, and I was trying to remember if they ever decided to do the COLA or not, and I'm trying to remember what happened. Unfortunately, they stopped keeping minutes from many years ago on their website, so not sure what that means.
Councilwoman Holterich?
Thank you, Mayor. Please describe the process you would utilize to recruit and select talented senior staff. Also, there could be several retirements over the next several years in key management positions. How would you lead the organization to have clear succession plans, and what must leadership consider when making the succession plans?
Honestly, that is my, that's what I believe is what us, as a profession, is gonna be struggling with most, is identifying talent and keeping talent. Because gone are the days, again, before I was in the profession in terms of having a defined benefit and having these very, people would say, rich benefits, but again, that was compensated because of less earnings that our employees had. So, it's, you know, try not to just, you know, when there's positions available, just putting out a, an ad in the paper and hoping for the best. It's being able to leverage the contacts that our employees have on all levels to be able to identify people that are already doing those jobs at other places and be able to identify those and encourage them to apply. And just not in a local level, but nationwide as well. Try to attract them to come here and tell the great story that what is, that is of Troy. But again, it's something that we're all struggling with, and it's different, using different tools and maybe different processes to evaluate them if we don't know who they are, but it might be different assessment centers, techniques, or looking at different web evaluations of their characteristics and how they would perform under pressure or answer certain scenarios as well to evaluate them. I've been able to utilize all those resources in terms of identifying staff, and it's not an easy process, but it's something that's an easy process, but it's something that's needs to be done to be able to have the best people to be able to serve the residents and be a part of the organization. Like I said, it's no easy task, there's no glutton or huge deluge of finance directors in the state of Michigan, same thing with, you know, people lining up like they used to be police officers, inspectors building inspectors are next to nothing around here. I know you guys contract with SafeBuild, just because they're filling that void right now in the marketplace, and it's going to be tough going forward, there's no doubt about it, but it's just, again, using the staff we have here now to identify the visuals and be able to, but again, it's also then to start training in, training up the people that are currently here, because you know what you have, and be able to get them the skills that they need to be able to fill the certain roles if necessary, if they can, and if they're interested.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Ellen, you didn't realize that was a softball question, because one of our crack residents asked him the exact same question. When I was talking to him earlier.
It's a brilliant resident.
Victor, the Troy Fire Department is unique in that it's the largest combination-style fire department in the state of Michigan and the largest municipal fire department in Oakland County comprised primarily of volunteer firefighters operating at one-half to one-third the cost of a full-time career fire department of comparable size. With that in mind, do you see value? I'm not going to ask that. Let's see, what do you, how do you propose supporting the concerns and needs of the fire department, in particular, its volunteer members?
It kind of, Taylor, we have a strong fire, volunteer fire department as well. We have full-timers that staffed for 12-hour shifts from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M., and then volunteers after that, and then volunteers during the weekend. We have full-time command staff that oversees them or that works 12-hour shifts as well, that oversee both our full-time staff and our volunteers as well. It's getting harder to be able to recruit those volunteers, and it's, but it just, we need to ramp up our publicity on that and our attraction efforts. I think you have a rich history of that here, so it's a little bit easier in terms of people know what they're getting into and what they're applying for. But I'm not sure if you still have the case, maybe people that are trying to be volunteer firefighters and then getting the training and then leading to a full-time status somewhere else, and that has been our experience at times as well. But at the same time, we're getting those full-trained-up individuals serving the community for the time that they're there. So again, just trying to support them as much as possible and also just to encourage and support them in terms of recruiting new members going forward, so, because it's not going to get any easier, it's not going to be more and more people jumping at the chance to jump into a burning building. But also, fire service is changing as well, there's not as many fires, I think on average there's one fire per firefighter in the country that they experience on an annual basis. So it's just looking at that and seeing how they can be utilized in the future in terms of fire prevention and in terms of disfiring the fire.
Victor, I have the last question.
Remember, we got an hour?
Yeah, almost.
We're going to have more.
Okay.
We have a bunch of questions.
I've heard enough about the budget. Based on the research you've done and your understanding of the city, how are you specifically the best candidate for the city manager position?
Again, obviously, I'm biased, I think I'm the best candidate for the position. I think just the knowledge that I have of Oakland County and the experience that I've had here, I believe the tenacity and the drive that I have to improve upon services that are being delivered currently and that can be delivered in the future is what sets me apart from other candidates. I think the candidates you have here are fantastic, I think you have a good pool of candidates to choose from, both not just now, but all the six pool, the pool of six you have before that. Not an easy decision by any means, I don't envy you at all. But I just think that in terms of my experiences that I've had to date and the experiences that I've been a part of sets me apart in terms of being well-positioned to help Troy going forward and be able to regain the trust of the employees, regain the trust of the citizens as well. And, yeah, I think I'll stop there.
Thank you, Victor. Well done.
Thank you very much. That's it? All right.
Thank you. We're going to take a short break, and then we're going to come back.
The City Council will be back in session. C2 is the City Council deliberations. Just my two cents. I think it would be better if there were comments or things that we should say before we take a vote or do any of that this time. I know that worked well last time. So I think this should be an opportunity for a council member to speak and talk about the candidates and give their opinions, their fictions. A council member chooses to just vote when it comes time to vote, that's fine too. So I sometimes worry about our order of, on the agenda, that the public comment comes at the end of us deliberating and maybe making a decision. So there's two thoughts. We could waive the rules and move public comment up and get some comment from the citizens that are here before we deliberate, or we could give them the opportunity to speak after we deliberate. Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to waive the rules and propose that we move council, uh, public comment to now before we, and have the vote as kind of like the end of the meeting.
Is there consensus for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Safe with any public comment.
Now, we'll see if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak during the public comment portion at this time?
No.
Okay. Please come up to the microphone and give us your name, please. I'll, well, we know who you are.
Yes, thank you. Hello again, I'm Avis Landeser.
Please be.
You do have a tough choice. All of these candidates are well-qualified, and what my comments are not specific to their knowledge as it is to their circumstances. Starting with Mr. Salconan, I think he may be overqualified for this position. Considering his very impressive resume, if he's selected to this position, whether he might one day in the near future wake up some morning and wonder why he's in Troy, Michigan, USA. He's working in a very relatively mundane job, at least compared to his past assignments in Europe, Africa, the Middle East, you name it. And that serving as our city manager is not using his talents to their best advantage, either for himself or for us, and then choose to seek employment elsewhere when we really want someone for the long term. In fact, he's overqualified, really. Mr. Cardenas, well-qualified again, and seems very comfortable explaining his viewpoints. As he mentioned last time when he was here, he is heavily involved, the way he put it, in various municipal associations and is a Grand Valley, both an alumni and a trustee of that university. He may find himself torn between time spent becoming acquainted with Troy and his new position and his obligations to these various organizations. His wife, again, from his first discussion here, is employed by the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor, and commuting back and forth at some time could become a family issue for them. Mr. Wilson, again, well-qualified. He'll not require any time to become acquainted with our city because he lives here. His family, with his family, his wife teaches here and his kids attend our schools. He advises us not to sour on the profession because of bad experiences with our last manager, which is really very good advice. His affable personality could help heal staff morale issues.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment at this point? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to the table for deliberation. Does anyone want to go first to go around the table? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to start by thanking Gov. HR, James, Heidi, and the team for bringing us six candidates that were outstanding. The three that we had tonight, you know, I'm not going to say anything bad about any of them, but I mean, it's just they're tough choice, three great candidates. Great job, thank you so much. I'm surprised by the, was it City of Grand Haven or Grand Rapids that also had whittled it down to three candidates and then decided they didn't like any of them. That's a shock to me that that would happen, and it's obviously probably a different search company that came up with that.
No, why don't you go?
Oh.
There's a story there somewhere.
Always is.
James, did you want to come to the table with us while we deliberate, or are you okay there?
I am perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments at this point? Councilman Anderson?
I'll go ahead. Thank you so much. Great candidates, great process. The, you know, all three candidates tonight, it literally is a coin flip. You know, you look at the positives and negatives of all the conversations that we had, and they all fit a certain aspect of what we need. And, you know, there's some deficits in each corner as well, so, and hopefully we've addressed those in the question that we've had tonight. And I kind of share the concerns about Rex. You know, he's, he's got so much international experience, you know, what does he want to do here in Troy? I admire the military aspect. I think regardless of what we give him to do, he's going to knock it out of the park. I think that's, that's a given. I think he's got the capability to do that. I think some of the, some of the questions that he answered, he had to deprogram himself from military jargon, get it down to municipal jargon. I think that was some of the hesitation you saw, so he has to kind of get through that process where the others didn't. So I think that, that was kind of complicated. Chris, I like the heck out of Chris. I think he's, affable is a great word. You know, he's got a good sense of humor about things, he's got a good, good perspective on his profession, and I think he'd do real well here in Troy. And Victor, obviously, has a great grasp of what we need here at Troy and the job at hand, so, again, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilman Hamilton?
Just to be honest, I kind of have information overload right now. And again, as I said online, I apologize for letting my emotions get to me last meeting. I hope, just one time, I'll ask for a pass on that. And, you know, I'll, we'll work together, we'll figure this out, you know, I'll figure it out. You know, there's so much information in my head right now, I feel like I'd like the weekend to think about it and then make our final decision Monday. That, that's where I'm at. You know, I agree with the three candidates. Councilmember Henderson put it perfectly, they all have pros and cons, it's hard for me, and as obviously you guys know, I like Mark Miller too. So, you know, I, if I, I just would like a few more days to think about it, with the decision on this matter too. That's where I'm at. See, I hope everyone else thinks.
Thank you, ma'am. I thank all three candidates for coming tonight, spending an hour with us. I think it was timed very well, so that we certainly leveraged that first interview that we had with them and certainly wound up more. As Councilman Henderson said, each one has strengths in different areas, and certainly there are some questions I thought were answered by, you know, one candidate better than the other and vice versa. I feel similarly as Councilman Hamilton. There's a lot of information that has been presented to us, first in the interview, then, you know, also in terms of public comment, employee public comment. And when I reflect on any hiring process that I've done in my professional career, typically you at least wait 24 hours before the panel of interviewers, where it can be to discuss, so that information can be processed appropriately, there aren't snap judgments made, and so my preference as well would be for, you know, this to maybe be included in Monday's regular council meeting agenda.
Councilman Horowitz?
I'm, yes, I'm overwhelmed as well. If we were under the gun to make a decision and hold out here at this late hour, that I would do it. If we, that was always an option, I think, going, going into Monday, that there were very well-thought-out comments from members of the public that met with the candidates. We have a great deal of employee feedback here as well. If Mark Miller has any doubt ever about if he's respected by the staff that he's worked with and reported to him through this, he should not have another moment of doubt ever. It is striking how, how well-respected you are by the team, and it speaks to your character and your fortitude and your leadership, and you are to be commended. The three candidates that appeared here tonight were, they have to be exhausted too. They did employee meeting, they did meetings with the public, and then this late hour for the interviews, and so appreciative of the time they spent. And each brings a different thing. And I want, I would like, I would appreciate and value the time to process what I feel the match is. We have multiple needs here to address, and my, I guess if, if council members would be willing to wait till Monday to, for a final deliberation, it would be great to be able to process this over the weekend. Personally, I would feel that way, because this is a tough one, and it's important. We want to round this corner cleanly and feel good about it collectively, I think. And that way, we won't look as if we rushed tonight after a tiring evening, so.
Councilman Baker, or Mayor Pro Tim Baker?
Mmm.
This is the first time I've...
It's only been four days. It's been four days.
Yeah, but you've been practicing.
It doesn't solve, it doesn't scouse them, right?
It's not harder.
It's not my fault, I was just reading your, um, thing.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not sure, you know, part of me says, we did have three very intense interviews tonight after the public comment, and I'd like to discuss some things a little bit while it's still fresh. I hesitate to lose all of the, what we've just absorbed in the flesh and come back Monday night and be faced with a whole different, oh, it's not as fresh as it was Thursday night. So I guess my question's more about process, how that works, or how that should work if we were to consider something like that. I mean, I, I think it might not be the best thing for a divided council of saying, no, we don't want three of you to think about things, and we want you to make your decision tonight. That's not going to play very well in the community or at this table, I don't think. So, and we've had a precedent of if people need more time, we usually grant that, so I can respect that and understand that. But I don't want to just pack up my things and leave right now.
Okay.
Because I think that there's a lot, that maybe it could be flushed out a little bit while it's fresh in our minds.
That's a good question.
Maybe, I don't know. Okay. But that's kind of, I mean, I, I'm ready to go for hours, we could talk.
Freak up the club, please.
Before we, you know, there still has to be consensus to do that, and I'm not sure if that was consensus or not, but maybe I'll just say something and then we can, I, I didn't, I sort of anticipated that this might happen, and I, I'm with you, Ethan, that usually if one council member asked for more time to make a decision, you know, especially this type of decision, I don't think I would, I would oppose that under the circumstances. But I'm just telling you from my perspective, this was important, obviously, but there were other interviews and there were other data. I, I'm not just using this to make my decision for me, what happened today. You know, it's a small, small part of it, but it's not, you know, I've been involved in picking a manager in the past, and we did it in one night, and it can certainly be done, you know? There is a lot of, lot of info, and there is a lot of data, but if somebody needs, if somebody needs extra time, I'm not going to be opposed, I'm not going to personally be opposed to that. I don't know if anybody's really going to discuss the candidates anymore tonight anyway, so I share what Councilman Pennington said. You know, I'm not going to sit here and try and make a case for somebody in a negative, in a negative tone. I, they were three very, very good, good candidates, and I want to echo to Gov. HR, thank you. But I'm prepared, I'm prepared to keep going tonight if we, if we need to, but I'm also wanting to respect council, council members that want more time. So having said that, I just, I'll just say a couple of things, because I would be the fourth, you know, consensus to, and I think the best thing to do is just not take any action tonight, then that will, that will show up on the next agenda, and we'll just continue from where we are, that we didn't take any action, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to echo a little bit of hope from Councilman Henderson regarding Rex. And also, I'm sorry that the last name...
It was my name, sir.
That's it.
I traded Murphy for that.
No regrets.
I mean, you know, it's almost wow, you know, when I, when I, when I listen to him and read his resume, and it's one of the reasons I wanted to bring him and see what the presence was. You know, you do get a sense that maybe he is a little bit overqualified, and in my opinion, just, he's just missing a little piece of the municipal, you know, if he would go get some, be an assistant city manager or a smaller city and then maybe take a step. But I talked to Gov. HR about the military before the last interviews, and they told me that they're having a lot of success recently with military personnel coming out and going to cities very similar to our size and being very successful. So I don't know that we should hold that against him, per se, but I think you have to take it when you, when you're competing against another candidate. And both of the candidates, Chris and Victor, in my opinion, could step in here and they could both do a very, very good job. And to the point, you know, Chris, Chris is, you know, has family here. My little concern with Chris is that it is a small, small city, and I think there is something to be said with having some experience in a city very similar to ours. And Victor, to me, is, for me, somewhat of the ideal candidate for me, because he's, he's an up-and-comer, he's kind of, he's ready for that next step, he's ready to, to move forward, and he comes from a city that's very similar to ours, has the experience and the schooling and the ICMA credentials. And if you really dig into his, his resume, is where you really, you know, nobody likes to come in and brag about yourself, but, you know, he could have come in here and really bragged about himself from guarding ICMA and his, you know, his connection to them. So he brings that, the education, he, you know, that's what he went to school to be, was a city manager. And so I just, I just think he's at that stage. In his last interview, he said he would commit to bringing his family to Troy. Okay? I don't, I'm not that, I'm not concerned because his wife might live in Ann Arbor or it might be a commute. That's a family decision for him and his wife, not for me. That's not my, that's, in my opinion, that's not for me to decide, that's for his family, but he committed to bringing his family here. He wants to relocate and bring his family here, and the Troy schools have a lot to do with that. So I read public comment cards, I read the city, and I couldn't agree with you more, Helen, regarding the city staff, and I would be shocked if it would have been any different, You know, Mark has, Mark has done a great job, Mark has been an asset to the city of Troy for, for a number of years, he's a great planner, great guy, I have all the respect in the world for Mark. But, you know, I tried to take a look at everything in its totality, and, you know, Victor just kind of rose up a little bit to the top for me, so I just, that's all I'm, all I want to say, I don't want to say anything negative about, they were all great, and if anybody else wants to say anything, please do, but there is consensus to not take action That's my two cents. Councilman Pennington?
I have asked for more time in the past, so I don't have a problem with taking more time, unless we can talk further and come to conclusion tonight, you know, it would be, it would look good for us if we could move forward and get this done, but if, you know, if that's not in the cards for tonight, I understand that too. I want to thank all three candidates again for, for coming out. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Horowitz?
I think part of what I'm, I'm going back to is reflecting on resumes again, and then also the personalities that you meet over the evening, and it's whirling through my head, just to get some thoughts out loud that process here going forward. I think Rex seems like an outstanding human being to me, and I was very impressed with his leadership philosophy and his honesty of how he'd have to rely on staff. He was very, very candid about that, and I think all things considered, if everything was equal and we weren't coming off of what we've been coming off of as a staff, I might be open to the idea of, hey, let's see if, you know, bringing this kind of an outside perspective then would be of value. And I'm just, on the mind, looking at this holistically and looking at the big picture of all this, that I don't think that's in the best interest as a, as a leader, outside leader, to put, to put myself in that position. I guess I'm speaking personally, especially given some of the staff feedback. And that's only a piece of what I'm thinking about. I do speak about staff a lot because I'm very familiar, having worked here, but that, just to be clear and to assure my fellow council members, it's not the only thing I'm factoring into my decision-making, and I want to assure you all of that. I think it's critical, though, that we help staff get through this time, and while he has, I think, a leadership, leadership capability to do that... has, I think, a leadership capability to do that, the lack of municipal concerns me in that, that would be. Both Chris Wilson and Victor, they're both so impressive, and their personalities, their passion for municipal work and that experience that they can bring seems so valuable, and they bring each of them a little bit of a different twist. One of the things that Chris brought up is because he does come from that smaller, having been on the front line shoveling the snow one time, or filling in to answer the phone, you know, there's a huge value in that, in terms of the empathy for the full staff of what they do and leading that. And yet, he also has this very higher-order understanding of municipal work, the challenges of cities in this region and in the state, and the policy decisions that present huge challenges for us. And so he seems to have both ends of that. Victor comes out of a city more similar to ours. Our library challenges, he seems very familiar with, and these are all the things swimming through my mind, and I'm not sitting here saying, oh, I know exactly, this is what I think is the right thing to do. Now, maybe as the conversation goes on, I could get there, to your point, Councilman Pennington. I think we want to be done.
Yes.
I'm just trying to be cautious that, because we want to be done, that we get done properly. So I don't want us to rush through our conversations. I appreciate you differing. But they really are impressive, and I think I would personally be able to work confidently with both of them. And so that's my challenge, that's where I'm at. For what it's worth. I don't know if anybody else can carry us further forward.
Everyone else is going to speak, but before we do that, whoever's got their cell phone, can you please silence that? You can text back and forth and have that on silent, if you don't know the option. Thank you.
It's a public service announcement brought to you by councilmen.
At the late hour, it starts to get irritating.
Mayor Protem?
It's just a test. You know, for me, the three candidates all definitely brought something unique, and important, and powerful, and yes, they all have deficiencies in certain areas. But I'm trying to, I guess maybe my struggle is going back to originally what we said we were looking for in the next city manager, because I see style differences between the three of them that are very unique. And, you know, I think, okay, do I want someone that has a lot of energy, and that's going to get out there, I think is going to run around the city and really be a strong advocate that way? Or do I see somebody who's, looks like a great relationship builder, very affable, very, very open? And how do I reconcile that? I often used to say about our previous city manager, it's sometimes not enough, it's more than a one-person job, you need somebody that can have all the passion and energy, and somebody that also is going to cross the Ts and dot all the Is. And it's hard to find all that in one person. And I, as I sat through the interviews, I thought that person was the one at one point. I could go, I said, okay, I can see myself appointing this person for X, Y, and Z, and then I'd back off, and then the next person would come, and I'd think the same thing. And I think that is why I do need a little more time to really think about it. It is an important decision. We have been faced a lot with it, or faced a lot over this past year. But, I mean, a question that I guess for all of you is, you know, what is more important? Or what is the most important thing, based on the candidates that we have? What is that thing that we're looking for? I think that's something that's going to help me make my final decision, as I really sit with that. And I'm trying to sit back and remember my interview in here with Gov HR, when they asked the question for what I was looking for. I should have taken notes, because it evolves, you know, it evolves through this process. The public comments and the employee comments, I think, are very valuable, and like Councilman Henderson said, they, you know, they play an important role, but they're not the only thing in our decision-making and this, and we have to find that balance. And I initially thought with Chris that I would be concerned about it coming from such a small community, but then I kind of did, I did like his answers on, you know, what he's had to go through, and if you combine that with the staff that we have and the expertise they have, maybe that is a great combination. And with Victor, I'm looking as if he's there, he's clearly not. I'm having fond memories. I think that, to your point, Mayor, talking about an up-and-comer, that energy, to me, is very interesting and exciting, is something that can keep us going strong and moving forward at the pace I feel like we need to be because of the stall we've had for obvious reasons. And I talked about that in our interviews a couple weeks ago, how I do want somebody that's ready to go as best as possible, which probably is, you know, nothing against Rex. I think he did do a great job, he's done a lot of preparation, but my concern with him would be, he's just, having to lean so much on staff right out of the gate is probably not what this city is best going to be served by. It just, that doesn't make sense to me, despite his talents and his ability, and I think he's a very hard worker, by everything I've seen in the comments, in the public. I think a few people mentioned that, he's a good listener, I think that's great, and he's trying to take a leap, I don't know if it's right for him. So when I look at Victor and Chris, I still, I'm really, I have to sit with who is really what we're after and what we're looking for, and obviously, the decision we make is going to have a huge impact on our city and our community and on city staff, and trying to figure out between the seven of us which is going to be the right choice is giving me a little pause.
Well, hang on a second, before we finish. You said there's one thing, but there is not one thing. That's just like when James asked us that question when we started. We couldn't answer the question, because there is not one thing, it's just, there's so many different.
But we're now forced to at least come up with a handful of things.
A lot of intangibles, really, would be thinking about. Sorry, Dave. So Rex, a couple of the comments that came through, you know, what does he want to come here for, and why does he want to land in Troy when he's had all this international experience? And I can tell you that, you know, I'm sure, living internationally with a family has got to be taxing at one point or another, and what better place on the planet than the center of the universe, Troy? So I can appreciate his desire to be here.
City of tomorrow.
City of tomorrow and today.
Today.
But that's, and there was one other comment in the public sheets that were given to us, and it said that, you know, Rex really knocked the socks off this one individual, and he indicated in his remarks that it would be great to have the city of Troy have him at the helm, because it would be something unique and possibly spectacular in the future for the city of Troy. That said, there is a certain amount of gray area there that, you know, can he hit the ground running, and is that what's necessary for Troy right now? So I'm not sure he checkmarks that box for me yet. Chris, I like all of his answers. In fact, when we asked about coming from a small community to a big community, I love that, because, to your point, you know, he's had the experience of shoveling the snow and all these other things, and his comment about moving up to a bigger community and that responsibility and being able to delegate is easier than doing the opposite, and coming down and having to take on all those things. So I think that answer was kind of good. The checkbox for me that's not checked is, you know, can he delegate? So, yeah, it's an easy jump, but is he going to be able to come in here and actually delegate and let people be responsible for what they need to be responsible for? So that's the box unchecked for me with Chris, and I think he'd be great for the city and staff. And Victor, honestly, he checks all the boxes. I didn't see really any deficiencies there. I think from an employee standpoint, I think he could come here, hit the ground running, you know, do the windshield time with whoever he needs to do the windshield time with, get very familiar with the community. He's going to relocate here. He's had to have had that conversation with his wife, or he wouldn't make that commitment here. You know, if he's got any kind of relationship with her at all, that...
Honey, you got some news.
We could ask him, but I have to make some assumptions. So I think that that is not necessarily a concern that I have. So I think he fills more boxes than the other two, for me, generally. And regarding Mark Miller, Mark, I also appreciate the comments that came from the city employees. Obviously, they, you know, they think highly of you. We do, too. This isn't about that, it's not about personalities, it's about the entire picture. And that is a lot of responsibility to throw on seven people, especially coming off the last two and a half, three years that we've had to come off, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham.
So I appreciate Councilman Baker's, or Ray Protem Baker's. I can't see his AICAC.
Tough for you to give up on that one.
I appreciate your suggestion that perhaps we get some of the dialogue out tonight while things are fresh in our heads from things that we may have learned tonight. Three very strong candidates, all in different ways. With Rex, I really can appreciate his leadership style, his management approach, and certainly the integrity that he seems to bring. My main concern is not that he wouldn't be capable of learning what he needs to learn, but how long would it take, and how might it tax the staff to get him up to speed? I appreciated his honesty and candor in saying, I'm going to have to rely on them. You know, and thinking about when the new city manager would come on board, it would be, I'll just say, early in 2019, that's right in the thick of the budget session, and that's not the best time to be getting someone up to speed on, you know, municipal funding, laws, statutes, that sort of thing. I think if things were, if the context were different here in Troy, maybe that would be a lesser concern, but right now it is. Between Chris and Victor, I think their styles are different. Both affable, clearly, both were very engaging at the table and had us laughing at various points during their interview, which is always impressive, during an interview. You know, with Chris, he understands the city, he's been living here for years, he's got kids in the district. He doesn't need to know where the library is or if it's hours of operation, because he's taken his kids to the library all the time, for example. And he has, I'll say, the CEO-type experience of being the village manager and having to deal with things like M D U. In addition to answering phones, you know, because you do have a small staff, I can appreciate that. And I appreciated his candor, that, you know, delegation is something that he has to work on, because most of the situations he's been in, he's kind of had to be, basically, self-reliant or bring some bench depth. With Victor, you know, clearly, he's got the passion, the energy, the drive, the hunger for the public administration, I mean, it's what he does. He's very engaged with ICMA, has a leadership role with Rand Bailey, these are all great things. So for me, I see Victor and Chris as being the two that stand out the most, and now I'm trying to weigh, as you said, there's multiple things, or I'm getting late, both of you are sitting there. None of the two of you sitting across from me mentioned it's more than just one thing. And now I've got to weigh which factors, to me, and to the residents of Troy, are most important. You know, in a nutshell, I'd say the most important thing is being able to hit the ground running, and both of them I see as being capable of doing that. Now I just need to, I'll say, ponder further on which one most aligns with the city's needs, the staff's needs, our needs as well.
There are no other comments, we will take no action this evening, it will be on the agenda for Monday, and because we take no action, I don't believe this will air, because it's not finished.
No, it will air, but your decision obviously could be made on Monday, so it will be airing.
To be continued.
This wasn't live tonight?
No.
You waived your rules of procedure earlier.
Oh, so that was late.
Somebody couldn't watch the questions, so.
I thought they were sequestered, maybe.
They were. Is this on the postponed, or we're on the agenda on Monday with this meeting?
Yeah, postponed.
Carryover.
So it'll be like on the top of the agenda?
Before public comment?
It's near the front.
Yeah.
It's near the front.
State, right.
And videos will be posted on the news tomorrow.
At the earliest opportunity. Might be Saturday, because of the length.
The meeting of tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, words earned.